Good evening. I would like to call to order this joint meeting of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. And please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Town of Burlington will be holding the November 16th, 2023, meeting as a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the November... Sorry. As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for an in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following: townofberlingtonwebx.com/townofberlin. And the meeting number is 2347-597-8867. Members of the public looking to participate, please raise your hand. Staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. This meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I would like to have a motion, please, to take Item L... Excuse me. Is it L?
One.
1F, thank you, out of order for discussion purposes. Let's...
Madam Chair, I'd like to take Item 1F out of order for discussion purposes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is 6-0. Item E... Excuse me. Item 1F is a public hearing petition to amend and update Article 8, Section 8.4.0, wireless communication facilities of the Burlington zoning bylaws submitted by the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of December 7, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is 6-0.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 8E out of order for discussion purposes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Item 8E is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.14. Wireless communications facilities which are subject to Section 8.4.0 shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of Section 1.0 of the zoning bylaws of the zoning bylaws, 27 Blanchard Road. Dish Wireless LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of December 7, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
6-0. Oh, opposed? No, not opposed, okay. All right. Next up is our Item A, public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 8, Section 8.1.0, 100-year floodplain district by replacing the section in its entirety submitted by the Planning Board on behalf of the Conservation Department. Welcome, Mr. Keely.
Thank you.
Please pull the microphone really close.
Okay.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a proposed update to the zoning bylaw, which is for floodplain, 100-year FEMA has certain requirements for floodplain zoning bylaws. Our current floodplain bylaw does not meet all the requirements. DCR works with FEMA as sort of an intermediary between the communities and the feds and has come up with a model bylaw for us to all use. So I've taken the DCR's model bylaw and customized it for Burlington. And so this bylaw will meet all the requirements for FEMA to keep us in the floodplain program so that people can get flood insurance and file claims or whatnot. Without having a bylaw like this, people would not be able to buy flood insurance in Burlington. So we're, you know, a community that obviously participates in that program. As far as the changes, it's more detailed than the existing bylaw. The purpose is bigger and longer and more explicit. There's a definitions section with a lot of definitions. The existing bylaw really just has none. It just references a few bylaws... I mean, a few definitions and other sections of the zoning bylaw. There's a designation of a floodplain administrator, which is new, which is the inspector of buildings. But basically, it really won't change how you do things in town. Construction projects in the floodplain in Burlington are regulated by... Under the Wetlands Protection Act and the local wetland bylaw and by the State Building Code. So the Planning Board sees applications for commercial projects that may require a special permit or a site plan in the floodplain. If there's no Planning Board jurisdiction, then the building inspector, for instance, for a single-family residence or something, the inspector of buildings handles it on top of the Conservation Commission, which regulates activities under the Wetlands Protection Act. So basically, it won't change how things are done, and it'll keep us in compliance with FEMA.
Okay, thank you. Staff, would you like to add anything?
No, it's pretty straightforward. It's a good thing that it's happening.
Okay. All right. This is a joint meeting of the Land Use Committee, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and the Planning Board. I'm going to ask my Planning Board members first if they have any questions. Anyone?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Bill, please go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Keely, you said there are some major items that were missing in our previous town bylaws. Is there kind of a high-level summary of what those were?
Okay, so the definition... There's a bunch of definitions that are in this draft bylaw. Those definitions were not in the existing bylaw. There were a few in the existing bylaw that references a few other places in the zoning bylaw where there are definitions. But they're required to be specifically by FEMA. You've got to put all these definitions in your zoning bylaw. Once again, the purpose is probably like five times longer than the purpose in our existing floodplain bylaw. Let's see, what else? So let's see, the requirements to submit new technical data, that is new. That wasn't in there. And as I said, the designation of the community floodplain administrator. That's new, so that wasn't in there.
Great, thank you very much.
Before we move on, I did want to mention we have a couple of seats available. If there are other members of either DBRC or Land Use in the audience that want to come up and join us, please feel free. There are seats over here to my left. So Sherri, you are representing DBRC.
Jeff is here, too.
And Jeff is as well.
Mark.
And Mark, okay. Is there anyone here from Land Use? Okay. See, no one. There may be someone online, but first we'll look to DBRC if you have any comments or questions.
Just... We were just talking about the definitions, so follow up on that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's way down there, but, okay. So historic structure is not in our Article 2 definitions? I'll take your word for it, because probably it's...
It's not actually.
What definition is that, anyway?
It's not in our Section 8. It may be in another portion of the zoning bylaw, but it's not specifically listed in the floodplain zoning bylaw.
Okay. And then there's same thing for variance. So I was wondering if those kind of terms are more... More out of bylaws, so I don't know if they should shift into Article 2. But, you know, I don't want to mess with this, because it's good, but I just didn't want to make sure there were any duplicates or...
Perhaps more importantly, let's make sure that the definitions match.
Yes, exactly.
If they show up somewhere else.
Or delete one from Article 2 if this is, you know, a better definition.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from DBRC? No? I see Zi Wang has her hand up online. Can you unmute her?
A request was just sent.
Okay, Ms. Wang?
Up on your screen. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you. I have just a quick question for John. John, as a resident, like, how would a resident know that their property has been changed, like, into this 100-year floodplain now? Like, is our town going to... Or who's going to send them a letter, let them know? That's my question.
Okay, so, I mean, the floodplain itself is not changing at all with this floodplain zoning bylaw. It is going to change probably in a couple of years. This floodplain bylaw does not change the boundaries of the floodplain whatsoever. FEMA has created new maps. We do have maps that aren't official yet. They have to go through a public process, but we do have them. And they're probably... Their timeline is probably somewhere around June or July of 2025. And so I sort of decided to, rather than adopt those new maps and make these changes at the same time, just to make it less complicated, to update the model so that it meets the FEMA requirements. And then two years from now, this will have to be amended again, just with a minor change, just updating the map reference. But to answer your question, FEMA will be having some public hearings, community public hearings about the maps. I don't think they provide money to the communities to actually reach out to people and let them know. And it'd be kind of difficult. It won't be easy to go through map by map and figure out which parcels are actually are changing. But there will be many. Some people... Some properties will actually be not in the floodplain in the future, but substantially more flood... More will be in the floodplain. But this... But this map, this proposed bylaw does not do that now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Keely, I understand it would be difficult to inform residents individually if their property was changed and now is in a floodplain, but I would imagine we could undertake some sort of public...
Oh, definitely.
...information campaign to tell people, this is changing. Come to the Conservation Department or to the Planning Department, wherever we want them to go, to see if your property is affected.
Just kidding.
So I do think that's going to be important when it actually happens.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience, either online or in this room, who would like to speak? No? Okay. All right. I guess I'm ready... Let's see, what are we going to do here?
Continuing.
We're just continuing, okay.
Madam Chair, may I just make a motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of December 7, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item B, a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulation Schedule by adding a new section, 4.2.5.11, related to automobile dealership use. Said new section 4.2.5.11 to be permitted by special permit in the general business BG District by right in the Water Resources District and otherwise prohibited in all other districts submitted by Herb Chambers, 93 Cambridge Street LLC. Who is here on behalf of Herb Chambers?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reimer Bronstein here tonight, representing Herb Chambers Company in connection with the submission for Town Meeting zoning article. Chris Barages, I think you remember Chris, is engineer with Williams Barages, part of the team as well. So pleased to be before you here. Again, I know we had a chance to give you an informal update or presentation, I think at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, on this. But again, this is an article that we've submitted for the proposed renovation of the property at 93 Cambridge Street, which is where the existing Kia dealership is, that would allow for an upgrade in a, what we feel is a long overdue renovation of the property that would allow for the existing Kia dealership building to be able to have an expansion with an addition put onto it to the right. So had a very brief slide deck, if we could just walk through quickly with the board. But if you could just go back to the prior one there, Kale, and I appreciate your manning the computer here. So just so everyone understands, the existing building was originally built in 1970, operated by Passon Weis, who developed it and operated a dealership at that location. Herb Chambers obviously acquiring the property some time ago and putting the Kia dealership there. So we feel that this proposal is going to enable a significant beautification, aesthetic enhancement of the property throughout the entire property, both along Cambridge Street as well as behind the site as well, and meaningful improvements for the overall customer experience. We can go to the next slide. So again, the existing dealership is a non-conforming use. It was developed back in 1970, before that becoming a prohibited use in that zoning district, the zoning district being the BG zoning district. So what we have prepared and proposed is a bylaw amendment that would allow for a new use category for an existing dealership to be able to expand in the BG under limited conditions. The approach would obviously require us to be back before the Planning Board for a fully vetted site plan and special permit hearing if we were successful with the rezoning. So all of the elements of a site design would need to be addressed at that particular juncture. So this zoning bylaw text amendment that we're proposing is very much similar to what was done back in 2018 for the Porsche dealership, if you recall, where there was a text amendment that was submitted and approved by Town Meeting. And what I think has led to a very successful and appropriate, well-received redevelopment of that Porsche site. So this is the zoning article text here. This text is the same language that was submitted previously. And just by way of background again, obviously, we did go through this process before where we had submitted a warrant article for the September Town Meeting, and we decided to put that meeting off. I know that there were residents that came to Town Meeting and submitted a petition that same day expressing some concerns about the project and wanting more information. So we decided to put that off. And we did have a meeting with the neighbors back last month, I think it was October 18th, at the Kia dealership. And I know several are here tonight and obviously may want to speak. But we wanted to just have an opportunity to try to, you know, make sure everyone was aware of what the proposal was and maybe more importantly, what it wasn't, because I think there was a lot of misinformation that might have been out there in terms of what the proposal might entail. But so this language here is the same language that you had seen before, Madam Chair and board members. And again, it allows for a existing dealership in the BG to be able to expand under very limited conditions. It's limited to dealerships only that would be in existence as of the date of adoption of the bylaw, which would be the Kia dealership. And also, it has governors in place in terms of capping the size of any building that could be built to no more than 20,000 square feet in overall size. And, you know, the building that we're conceptually have designed would have a footprint of 17,700 square feet approximately, which, just to give you a sense of scale, it would be the smallest by far of any dealership in Burlington, even with the addition, you know, the Porsche is...
With respect, that's not what we're discussing.
I understand. It's just hard to kind of, yeah.
I understand.
All right. So, okay, so that's the warrant article. So a couple more slides that I would like to just maybe hit on is the reason why we're proposing this mechanism to accomplish what we're looking to do is because I think, as you probably know, the only zoning district in town that allows for auto dealership is the BT zoning district. And I believe there are only two of those in town. One where the... I think it's where Speedway is, and then one where Midas Muffler is. So that zoning district also happens to be the same zoning district that allows for these other uses such as gas station use, auto repair shops, car washes, and other... All types of automotive uses. So we didn't feel inappropriate to rezone BT because, you know, obviously, those other types of uses, I don't think are ones that the town would necessarily be desirous of seeing. Similarly, if you can go to the next couple of slides, too. The BT district also happens to be the town's adult entertainment district whereby adult bookstores and adult theaters, whatever, you can see the list, we highlighted them in green, those are all allowed in the BT district, too. So I made a very, I think, reasonable judgment that that's probably not what the town would want to have us rezone it to, even though they're all allowed by special permit. So, you know, what we have put together and if... Madam Chair, I know you don't want to have a presentation of the site plan, but I thought it might be helpful if I could just show a few of the photos of the existing site, just so you could better understand the property.
I'm not really sure that's necessary. We've all been through this, as you know. This is the second time we've been through this, that we're not talking about the site, the site plan, or the new develop... How the new... How the site will be developed if this goes through. So I don't think we really need to do that. And I do want to keep this part of the presentation brief because we have a number of residents here, and I want to make sure they have time to speak. Did you have anything else you needed to add?
Well, I mean, if you could just put up the aerial, I think it might be helpful, just so people understand what we're talking about. And I won't... I'm not going to get into any...
I think it's fine for you to help people locate it.
Yeah.
It is on Cambridge Street, on the same side of Cambridge Street as the high school, shortly after the high school.
Correct. These are the properties here that we're talking about. It's 93 Cambridge Street, which is the Kia dealership. Then you've got the building to the right of it, which is called the Quick Copy Building, 95, and then 97, which is where Waltham Pest has been located. So those are the properties that we're talking about. And again, I think that...
While you have that up there, though, actually, could you identify for me where the property is on Arlington Road that's residentially zoned?
I could. It's behind the Kia dealership, and it goes...
Where the cursor is right now?
To the left of the cursor.
Okay.
Out to the...
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That's where it is there.
And is it mostly wooded, or does it include that area right in front of the cursor that's not wooded, that it looks to be perhaps a sandy lot?
It is primarily wooded along the Arlington Street frontage, but there is a portion of it that historically has been used for some overflow vehicle park that existed. All of these properties, by the way, were acquired by Herb Chambers directly from Passon Weis. It was part of a package. It's not as if Herb has been out there...
I understand.
Kind of poaching them off, you know? It was all part of one land assemblage that was acquired. So at the time he acquired it, that area, that is the gravel... Is it gravel or dirt?
So that piece of property would not be rezoned? It would stay residential, am I correct?
Correct.
And what is the intention for that property?
So I know you would ask that at the DBRC meeting last week. And we have no intention whatsoever of expanding further into the RO zone land. We're fine making a commitment that there's never been an intention of us having any access out to Arlington Road. We're not looking to expand onto the RO. I think you should probably know it's not allowed under zoning, anyway. But to the extent that we can provide any assurances to the board or to Town Meeting or to others, you know, we're not looking to... And we would commit to never looking to rezone that to business use that would allow for the expansion of this. So that's never been on the table. I think from what I've heard anecdotally from some of the neighbors, it might have been an attempt years ago by the prior owner, maybe, to do that, but that is not something that we're looking to do at all. So...
If that is the intent, is your client willing to consider giving that property to the town so that it could be preserved as open space?
No, because I don't... It has value to it. It's a residentially zoned lot.
Right.
So, I mean, it could be developed for a residential home, I believe, so I don't think that we would want to...
Is there any way... This question is more for staff. Is there any way, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure, is there any way for us to, or for Herb Chambers and the town, to somehow put a restriction on that property that it can never be changed from residential?
At this point in the process, probably not. I think that, you know, during the, you know, I think for this to pass Town Meeting and they get to the site plan review part, I think that's where, you know, we could have maybe have a conversation.
I wasn't sure if it was even possible, because even if, at some point, anyone can always go back to Town Meeting and ask for zoning change, right? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I was correct in that understanding.
Yeah, I think we would be comfortable making that commitment if there's a way of documenting it appropriately. I mean, you know, we're going on record with it, so...
How big is that lot? The on Arlington Road?
Just over 20,000.
Excuse me?
Just over 20,000.
Just over 20,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so it's buildable.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the boards and committees to, if they have questions, I'm going to hopefully keep it brief because I want to make sure the neighbors all have time to talk quickly. My board members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Bill?
Maybe not for Mr. Vaughn, thank you, Madam Chair, but to staff. To the right and to the left of the property, is it BT as well?
No.
Okay, so only just that section there?
No, it's all BG, general business district.
And again, the items, because of, you know, the Mercedes and maybe the old Burlington Dodge, they're all PDD, so it doesn't apply?
Correct.
Okay. And again, from previous conversations we had, my concern was that the Board of Appeals could extend the building size from 20,000 up to whatever, and that was a yes from the last time.
That is correct. In our bylaw, the Board of Appeals can provide a variance for any numerical value.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
So you may... Not that you could prevent it from being zoned a different way, but may be able to put covenants on there that, you know, that would run with the land and not have anything to do with the zoning on it, so...
I believe you, because you're a lawyer, and I don't know about this. So I think it's something we should explore if this passes.
Can you hear you? So can you speak louder for the audience?
No, I'm just saying, they may be able to put private covenants.
Do you hear all of you? But for the reasons of... I can't hear, and it's very dark, and I'm hearing, yes.
Okay.
Because I'm hearing, as I try to turn them off. I'm hearing about natural physical, but real hearing, but hearing, and it's recording.
Okay. Thank you for calling it to our attention. I'm going to ask everyone to pull those mics really close. How's that? Better? Okay. Joe?
So you may not be able to restrict the zoning, because they could always go and get it rezoned, but you may be able to put private covenants on there that would be restrictions that would run with the land, and they'd be private, and it wouldn't be... Wouldn't be able to be changed by Town Meeting. You may be able to look at something like that.
For those of you that are behind the TV, if I can't see you, you can't see me, but there are some chairs over here, if you want to move over to this side, where you might be able to see a little bit better. And then we'll also be able to see you if you raise your hand. Feel free to take chairs and drag them over as well. This is not a formal setup. Okay? Thank you. Bring your chairs with you if you need to. Thank you. Joe, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other members of the Planning Board? Okay, DBRC and Land Use, who are present in the room first. Any of you have any questions?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay. Are there any DBRC or Land Use Committee members online who wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing none? Okay. Before I ask neighbors for their input, I do want to point out that we have a sign-up sheet, and please make sure you sign up on that sheet before you leave tonight so that we know that you're interested and we can keep you informed of any future developments. So anyone here in the room that would like to speak on this matter, please raise your Please come forward, this seat right here, and if you could move that microphone over, and as you've heard, please pull it really close, and start, please, by stating your name for the record and your address.
Hello, my name is Sharon Laurie. I am the maine of butter, my friends back here. I reside at 20 Arlington Road. And I thank you tremendously for allowing me to speak on behalf of my neighbors and myself. So first, I want to let you know that I did attend a meeting at Herb Chambers on October 18. a meeting at Herb Chambers on October 18. And I found it to be difficult for me, because I'm realizing how much my property and my peace is in jeopardy, and my safety along with my neighbors. I'm willing to read a quote from the renovation proposal that just really resonates with me, from Herb Chambers' crew. "The existing building no longer meets the needs of the business or the customers, especially with respect to the vehicle service operations." Now, as Attorney Vaughn pointed out, Passon West owned the previous building that was Porsche and Audi. Now, as you know, Porsche and Audi moved down the street on 3A, and it's not in a residential area. So, the big problem here is this is a residential area. Arlington Road abuts the high school. You talk about the property on 16 Arlington Road that Herb Chambers acquired in their transaction. You talk about the transaction. When the transaction took place, Herb Chambers already knew, they did not, they did not have the approval to expand. They knew it. I've been at my home for 10 years. I've had peace. And the back of my yard is the sewer. Most of us have sewers in the back of our yards. I'm not sure why. They talk about mediating the storm flow. Right now, we do not have any water coming into our space. When you talk about adding a large monstrosity like this, you're talking about changing the grade. If you change the grade, the potential for us to have water in our homes, mind you, there's wetlands at the end of the street, is great. If that does happen, what recourse do we have? Do we fight Herb Chambers and Company? We don't have the resources for that. Do we come back to you guys and say, "Look, someone made a mistake. It's too late for us. And this is our homes. This is where I plan to retire." You talk about the tractor trailers, the flat beds. You talk about the tow truck coming on Cambridge Street. I am aware that Herb Chambers has a place where they're supposed to take their cars, the new cars. And then they're supposed to drive them over to Cambridge Street. That's great. Now, what happens to the person that doesn't realize they're supposed to do that, and there's traffic backed up on 3? Arlington Road goes onto Cambridge Street. I've already spoken, and I've already witnessed the after effects of a girl getting hit, whether it was Herb Chambers people or not, I'm sure it was not. But the reality is, it is dangerous. You have children running up and down that street. You have families walking newborn kids. There's a lot of activity. There are no sidewalks. Herb Chambers' person already admitted that the light at the Mercedes dealership in that crosswalk is dangerous. And they're right. It is dangerous. You can barely cross the street. The light does not work. I am told that the light is governed by the state, not the town. So, there's a problem.
Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt. This is my mistake. I was supposed to inform everyone before you started speaking that each individual has only three minutes. You're at four and a half, so I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. Sorry about that. And then, everyone else, you get three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, to end this, I'm going to say Herb Chambers said it doesn't meet their needs any longer. Arlington Road, 16 Arlington Road, Herb Chambers definitely has the potential to take that piece of property, make it a cut-through, just a simple cut-through, to Arlington Road to do all of their test drives. It is dangerous. It is unsafe. And I ask that you respect our peace and our tranquility, and vote no to any adjustments, because it will never stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Laurie. Just, I'm going to call forward the next person, but I just want to also make sure everyone understands that this board is voting to make a recommendation to town meeting. It will be town meeting that is the ultimate decider on this. But we appreciate you coming and expressing your concerns. Thank you.
Barbara, can I just, just clarify one item here. And I respect Mrs. Laurie and her comments. And I know she was generous with her time when we met, you know, back in October. But I just want to reiterate, there's no way we're going to be providing an access road out to Arlington--
Okay. No, you already said that. I understand.
And just on the pedestrian thing, I just, you know, you don't want us to present the site plan, which I understand, but it's kind of hard to respond without being able to reference something, so--
I don't think you need to respond to everything.
We are proposing over 400 feet of new sidewalk along our side, which doesn't exist today, which would enable pedestrians--
Right. That's not what we're talking about tonight, though. And respectfully, Mr. Vaughn, I don't expect you to respond to everybody that comes forward. There's no way you could. You're not prepared. I'm not going to be able to respond to everybody that comes forward tonight. But this is an opportunity for the public to come forward, express their concerns or their support, whichever that may be. And I don't think that we should be responding individually to each person that comes forward. If there are specific questions that we have the answers to, we can do that. Fair? Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward. And again, please state your name for the record, and try to speak right into the microphone.
Thank you. My name is James McNiff. I live at 59 Villagewood Drive, which is across the street from the dealership, you know, in the Corporate Park area. I'm here to support the building of the, or Herb Chambers expanding his business. Right now, I live in an area where they've put in a life science building. You've okayed 270 apartments and a planned district development. And if you take those together, compared to what Herb Chambers is doing, it's very little. Now, I think Herb Chambers is a critical partner with Burlington. He's a neighbor who's been here, and has invested a lot of money, and people, and jobs. And I think there is, I'm assuming at this point, he's going to do the right thing. But the one thing I would raise, there is a safety issue. And I speak for the people that are on, that drive 3A, because I drive it every day. And we all know, you get out of Mercedes, and it's like you're throwing dice whether that person's going to come out. And I also feel bad for people in Arlington, trying to make a left. What I would suggest to Herb Chambers, and I don't see it on the plan, is if he's going to buy 99 or not, or if there is a problem. But we have a light at Corporate Drive. And if they could swing that road that exits that facility onto that light, which is just behind the building, all they got to do is they got to make a right out of the building, and we have a light that goes from Corporate Drive, I would suggest you take a look at that. Because if you put one more access onto the road where there's no light, and you've got Mercedes, and you have the mall right up the street from us, they're just shooting out, and everybody's just taking a chance at this point. So, that would be my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McNiff.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Please come forward. Oh. Thank you. Welcome. Please have a seat.
Hello. I'm Sue Mayo. I live at 30 Arlington Road, which is the last house that abuts the high school property. And I have a few things I want to say. First, I had a question and a couple of statements that Mark Vaughn made. One is that in 2018, we did allow it for the other one, but that Porsche place does not abut residence neighborhoods. So, that's number one. It's different. You say BT allows for all kinds of things. They're not allowed. They need special permits. So, it's not like they can just willy-nilly add an adult entertainment center. So, that being said, I think the entrance into Burlington shouldn't look like the auto mile, especially heading in towards the high school in the center of town. If you look at all the other places where there's car dealerships, they're on Route 1, they're on major thoroughfares, they're not in neighborhoods that have residence areas. I know Herb Chambers is great to the town, but I feel that has nothing to do with this particular zoning request. It's nice that you're wonderful, and I appreciate all the work that they do in town and all their donations. But pretty landscaping and sidewalks on Cambridge Street aren't enough to sway my vote personally. We're also talking about doing lots of traffic studies on Route 3A. You're going to narrow it down to the high school, and then from there, it funnels into two lanes. So, if you add to that, people dropping off cars for repairs and picking them up and all that, what time do you usually bring your car in? If you're a working person, at rush hour. If you're, you know, picking up, it's at rush hour. You have high school kids coming in. You have parents. You have school buses. You have the track team that runs. They do a Mildred. They do a Spruce. They do a, I can't remember the other one. I have it written, a Sunset. Those are the three loops that the high school track team runs. We hold, we hold multi-town events. We have graduations. You're throwing in all kinds of test drivers, tow trucks, repair vehicles coming in and out. And I'm against it personally.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. I remember having to run up and down Sunset on the track team. It nearly killed me, so--
I know. It's not fun. Both my kids were in track. I know Mr. Carr very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Thank you. Please come forward.
I'm Mary Jean Lucas, and I live at 24 Arlington Road. And I'm one of the abutters to the projected project. And I believe it will increase traffic in an already congested area of Cambridge Street. We have difficulty making a left turn out of Arlington Road onto Cambridge Street from early morning until mid-evening on both, on most business days. Crossing Cambridge Street from the bus stop at Arlington Road is very dangerous. It's already been stated, there are no working lights. We have narrow streets, no sidewalks. I believe this will increase cut-through traffic. Once the traffic on Cambridge Street becomes too much, people will cut through Arlington Road to get out to Middlesex Turnpike or the center of town. There's also the projected roadwork on Cambridge Street. And I have noticed the larger dealerships in Burlington border the highway or other commercial property. This dealership, it does border a residential neighborhood. We're worried about noise, loss of privacy due to the removal of trees, water issues if the wetlands are disturbed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Lucas.
Thank you.
While we're waiting for the next person to come up, Attorney Vaughn, can you send a copy of that literature that was sent to the abutters to staff, so that we can take a look at it?
Of which?
The letter that was sent to the abutters.
Okay.
Hi. Millie Nash. I'm a town meeting member. Oops, I'm sorry.
There's still--
It's a problem of hearing.
It was, Ms. Levine had referenced it during her statement. Can you get staff a copy of that, so that we can review?
Happy to get, whatever we sent out, happy to provide.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Nash. Please go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just have to say as a preamble, this is such an important meeting room, that my first question is, to whom could I go to ask how it can be made so that the people in the audience can hear? I think I've talked with people about town meeting and that being a problem. But democracy depends on communication, and communication is, and I apologize for interrupting. I tried to turn up my ears, but it did not work. So, I'm here both as a town meeting member, representing this district and living on Sunset Drive, because since I've had a little problems with my fevers, I have to take the car. And I realized if you want to get from one place to another in Burlington, bicycles work better, because if there are sidewalks, nobody's on them, so you can get around. And I get to meetings faster that way. So, it was lucky when Herb Chambers was kind enough to have an informational meeting for the neighbors. A couple of the neighbors on Sunset Drive, and I came, but we decided it would be best to go through Lexington Street up to the center of town and come down the right-hand lane, because it's impossible to make a left-hand out of Arlington Road. And if you could make it, you can't go anywhere, because the traffic was backed up way past Herb Chambers in that direction. So, I think the overall town problem is that until we solve the traffic problems, to increase the already very, very overwrought traffic is not a very smart idea. And that's a state road, I know. And there are real problems with it, because it not only has a hill that is a blindside kind of thing, and the product, those things need to be fixed. So, I want to put in a plug for anyone who will listen, that we perhaps could use a traffic coordinator to go with the economic coordinator, so that we could get mass transit and public transportation that would let us be able to have people have businesses that you could get to without all kinds of issues. But the other thing, I think, that worries the neighbors, and rightly so, is that when a part of the property is down in the residential area, it raises the, we have no intention, which we hear so often, but I think when the daycare center went on and Mall Road at the corner of South Bedford Street, they were not going to cut down the 80-foot pine trees, because they were a good buffer zone, until one morning, we woke up, and the trees were gone. Oh, they said, "We'll plant new ones." The unintended things which seem to happen make one nervous. The overall overriding issue that we need to get the Cambridge Street traffic situation, I think, under better control before we go ahead. I think Herb Chambers has done a lot of good things, but this could be bad for all of us. The other thing, which I have to say, rather shocked me when I was at the informational meeting, and I asked about sidewalk, and the person said, "Oh, we're putting in four-foot sidewalks." And I, I've become more sensitive about handicaps these days. I thought you could hardly push a wheelchair on a four-foot sidewalk. I think that if there are going to be sidewalks added to Cambridge Street, they need to be wide enough that you're not getting the blowback from the cars that are trying to pass you right beside you. You need to have them wider, and perhaps even set back. So, I think until those things are addressed, we should think very, very seriously about doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? In the room first. Seeing no one, I want to see if there's someone, anyone online that would like to speak on this matter? I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone?
Nope. Just a reminder, if you are online, to use the raise hand function. So, wait a few seconds to see if there's anybody who does that, but other than that--
Okay. We are--
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I wanted to let the residents speak, but I got--
No, please. I was going to ask if other, now, after hearing the residents, if anyone up here wanted to speak. So, please go ahead, Mrs. Ellis.
I don't know if that'll reach. Yeah, it only goes so far. At least we can get it closer. So, with regard to what you had mentioned before about, you know, assurances that things can be done, to me, I believe that now is the time to do that. Once town meeting, should town meeting approve this, it does go back to the planning board, and you can negotiate. But it's a negotiation. There are no hard, fast rules with specifics to, you know, some of the things you mentioned, the conservation restriction. And maybe you can, at that time, apply something. But to me, I feel that the zoning is the most important, and that's where some of these negotiations could be worked out. I don't know if it's a memorandum of understanding, or I don't know what the terminology is. I'm not a lawyer. Don't pretend to be one either. But some sort of what's important to the neighbors, to the town, with regard to some of these negotiated items that were in the list that Herb Chambers provided, and other things. You mentioned the residential lot and the conservation restriction or something. The sidewalk, I have mentioned in previous meetings, it's wonderful. They're putting the sidewalk, and we have to start somewhere. But the sidewalk goes to nowhere, because there's properties between there and Arlington. Can there be some sort of a financial, you know, gift to the town that could help doing sidewalks when the next person comes along to build one? We've done it in the past. But I, and I feel that I want to speak up, that these things need to be done now. And that will give town meeting, at least some town meeting members, an assurance that something will get done if the zoning passes. So, I guess that's my two cents worth at this point in time.
Right. I'm not sure if we-- I'm not sure if we can make those, do those negotiations now.
The zoning doesn't pass, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Then what happens?
I mean, it's kind of a moot issue, but then also if it does pass, they're going to have to come in front of us anyways. That's the part either.
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that's the part where we start to negotiate and have that conversation of, you know, this is what we're looking for, that you need a special permit, this is what, you know, what we're going to need in order to issue that. So I think it's kind of a, putting the car before the horse.
I understand your concern, you're, you're thinking, will we have any leverage once the zoning change goes through? But I think we do, because the, the special permit is not an easy process. And I think we, we can negotiate those things after the zoning change goes through. It would be very difficult to try to negotiate those things when we don't have a site plan and we don't, that's, and we're not doing that now.
Okay. All right. Can I ask a question?
Yes, one moment, and then when you do, come, come and sit, and I'll be right with you. Joe, did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, I thought you did, sorry. Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, my question is, if this goes through, what's to prevent them from coming and asking for variances to extend their parking lots?
Nothing.
Okay, so it's not just this special thing, it's that they could come forth at any time and make any more changes because we allow this.
Well, they can make requests, they can't change anything on their own. But they could bring requests to town meeting.
So even though they're giving us assurances now, they're only, poof, you know? They could be changed, okay?
Well, I don't necessarily agree, you know, anyone can request a variance for anything, right?
Right.
If anyone in the audience here wanted to build a home.
That's very true.
No, I mean, it would be a variance from the Board of Appeals, which are not very easy to get. I mean, we're not, I mean, look, we're, the, the plan that we presented is the plan that we proceed.
I think we're getting a little into the weeds. The answer is, is the proponent could at some point in the future make a request for either a zoning change or a Board of Appeals change. That would be carefully considered, and they would have to go through that process. But the request could be made, as any business can do. Mrs. Byer, please.
I just, I have a question about the residential lot. Is it buildable?
I believe, yes.
It's a 20,000 square foot lot.
And, and so if they want to sell that lot, and, or even build a house on that lot and then sell the house and the lot, they could do that. Trees will get cut down, it will fix it so there would never be a cut-through there. I don't know how that works for Herb Chambers. But there are a lot of things that almost no matter what they do, I think people will be unhappy for at least the short term. But if it's a buildable lot, build a house.
Yeah, why don't we see what we can do on our end to give proper assurance that, you know, we're not going to look to come in the future to rezone that or build a road out there, because that's, that's, there's no intention, or has there ever been, or will there be, to do that? So let us.
Well, nor, nor does zoning allow you to bring a commercial use through a residential use, it just doesn't, doesn't allow it. So that's not as much of a concern.
I'm not as, because that wouldn't be allowed, but it's possible the property could be used for something else if they were to rezone it, only if they could rezone it.
I mean, if you look at the residential lot situated, I don't think anyone's, I would be shocked if anyone would approve it to be rezoned. It literally sits right in between two houses.
Yes, I agree with you, but.
This zoning change doesn't affect the residential lot?
No, it does not, it does not. Correct. So is there anyone else on either of the boards or committees that want to speak? Or have a question? No? Okay, Ms. Lori, a quick question.
So my question again is, what has changed? Pass and Weiss tried twice, tried twice to have the amendments passed, the zoning amendments passed. It did not happen because the board voted it down. What has changed today?
Well, actually, this particular thing came before this board. We had a vote that was split. Not all members were present, so we still don't have all members present tonight, but we're not voting tonight. When it went to town meeting, it was postponed, so it never actually failed. To answer your question, what has changed between what was presented previously and what's being presented now? I don't think anything has changed in the actual request.
If I could borrow, I think you're asking about, you were mentioning Pass and Weiss's proposal.
The private person.
Oh, okay.
Which I, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with what they attempted to do previously, but from what it sounds like, what they attempted to do was to rezone the residential land to be able to come in off of Arlington. But, but I, I'm just getting that anecdotally from what you've indicated before, so.
But that is not what's before us now, and I, I think we are getting a little far afield. So, thank you. And I think if no one else has any questions, we should probably continue this to our next meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter, the Planning Board meeting of December 7th, 2023. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Item C, a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article II, Definitions, and Article IV, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulations to Define and Regulate Fitness Studios and Fitness Centers, submitted by Burlington Equitable LLC. Welcome. Please have a seat, and if you could start by stating your names for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Edward Paree, P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick. Now let Steve introduce himself.
Steve Venezia, I'm the executive vice president and in-house counsel for core development and management.
Thank you. Okay. So why don't you give us a, a quick rundown of what it is you're trying to do? And remember, we're not doing a site plan, we're just talking about a text amendment right now.
Understood.
Thank you.
So just quickly, I'm here on behalf of the property owner of 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension in Core Development and Management. They are a franchisee of Planet Fitness. They currently operate on Ray Avenue behind the Ice Center. Ice Palace. And it's a place that's pretty cramped, needs extensive renovation, and has some real parking challenges, as we mentioned in our letter. When we looked at the zoning bylaw, currently, fitness centers are limited to 5,000 square feet. That just doesn't fit within today's modern and low-price facilities. So we're seeking a text amendment to protect those smaller places, up to 5,000 square feet, by making it, creating a definition of fitness studio, which kind of references a smaller place. But at the same time, creating a definition for fitness center, which would allow for facilities above 5,000 square feet, up to 20,000, which is kind of the sweet spot, which Steve can describe. So Steve has a quick presentation, just so you understand the issues that they're dealing with, and then we can finish up with the amendment itself.
If you could just go to the top, sorry, Caleb. So you folks have seen this before, but we were founded in 2007, and we began franchising Planet Fitness locations at that time. We currently own 70 locations in five states, many of which are in Mass and Rhode Island. We purchased this Burlington location in November of 2022 from the previous franchisee, and we have agreed to a letter of intent with the landlord, which is Burlington Equitable Limited Partnership, for the new space. Bauer Hockey Experience would downsize under, under our plan. You know, our goal really there is to bring the high-value, low-cost fitness to everyone in Burlington. We, as Ed said, we feel that the current offerings are not up to brand standard. If you go ahead. Thank you, Caleb. Our current location on 40 Ray Ave has been open since September of 2007. Our current hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 5:00 to 10:00, 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, sorry, Friday, 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We do have about 5,300 members. There's 25,000 square feet of space, about 18,000 of it is usable gym space. The new location would be on 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension. The hours of operations will be remaining the same with those members transferring over. It is about 17,500 square feet of state-of-the-art gym space with more modern offerings. And, you know, really, we want to be able to improve those offerings to the community. Anybody who's been in the gym can tell you that it's out of date. We have many gyms in surrounding communities that are much better representation. We just recently remodeled our Bill Ricker Gym, for example. Much, much better amenities and, and facilities for the community at the same great value, which is really important for us because that's what our members love. We'll be closer to our members here from a residential perspective. There will be better ADA accessibility for those folks, and obviously, an improved layout at this location. One of the big things for us is the parking. We have 58 parking spaces existing at the Ray Ave location, which is that, thank you, Caleb. And that is actually the Ice Palace parking on the bottom-left corner of that, so that's not our parking. And there will be 159 spaces at the new location, giving us ample opportunity to increase accessibility with that parking field and increase of over 100 spaces. You folks have heard, one of the things that really came across here was our busiest time here in Burlington has actually consistently been in the summertime, which is very rare for us. Usually, it's January, February, and March with all those New Year's resolutions. We were wondering why here, and we looked into our high school summer pass program, which is when teens ages 14 to 19 can work out for free in our gyms. Hopefully, you've seen the commercials, many, 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 many times. But we had 994 local high schoolers sign up here in Burlington, which was a great opportunity for them to get fit for free during the summer.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask, I'm so curious about the, when you said there's 58 parking spots, is that what you said? And the rest are, are the, the Ice Palace? But I, nothing is, you know, delineated that way. In other words, is there an understanding or some sort of an agreement between them?
Yeah, effectively, it's an understanding, yes. Our members certainly utilize the Ice Palace parking, but.
Right. So I mean, you wouldn't even know which is Ice Palace and which is, you know, Planet Fitness right now.
Yes and no, if you went down Ray Ave, it's very clear which is the Ice Palace and which is Planet because of where the entrance for Planet is versus where the Ice Palace is. You really have to walk past the Ice Palace in order to get to the entrance of Planet Fitness on Ray Ave, where that rectangle is. So the entrance is actually right where the arrow and the cursor, there you go.
I guess my real question is, are there designated spots? Or is it, because, no, I mean, I mean, for all practical purposes, just a bunch of parking spots? You know, for both, for both.
That's not to preclude a business from designated spots, however. Right? There's, there's nothing to preclude.
There's nothing to preclude, right. You can, but you're saying somehow there's 58, but it's, it's really.
That's our, that's our available parking field. That's, that, that's the, technically, the parking, just like street parking, right? We would never count street parking as our available parking field. We would say that there's street parking available, but it's not an available parking field.
Yes, go ahead, go.
I can attest that the rink people also use your parking.
Absolutely.
Correct. So they, they will take those spots first. So your, your tenants, you know, your, your customers have to use the, the rink park.
Sure.
Right. Okay, I'm not sure, though, what this has to do with the text amendment. So let's get back to what we're supposed to be talking about. No offense. Steph, did you have anything you wanted to add about the text amendment?
Not specifically. I did, after we go through it, I did, I did want to bring up the zoning map just so people know where this exactly will be affecting in town.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, they're bringing this, and I also did want to go in, let them go through the amendment first, the text of it, and then I will, I think I will.
Please, go ahead. Are you, did you?
We're just going, we're going to get the text amendment up, and then I can.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
That's it, all right.
So as I said, we're, we're actually keeping, we're making a modification to the definition of fitness center, which is currently limited to 5,000 square feet. In meeting with the zoning bylaw review committee, it was suggested that we make a couple of changes and include the word indoor before establishment, which we've done in this proposal. As I said, we did protect the smaller places, the fitness, by creating a definition for fitness studio. And that, you know, those are, you know, places that operate in the central business districts so that we protect that corridor there. If we could just scroll down a little bit, Caleb? Is that on you? Oh, Liz, thank you. So here's the use table, as we've proposed it. Fitness center would then be allowed, again, more than 5,000 square feet, up to 20,000. It'd be allowed in the business districts and the retail industrial. We would keep, the fitness studio is basically a repeat of what the fitness center definition is now. And so you'll see it's not allowed in the civic central district or the central business district. It would still be allowed for the smaller ones, but as you see where it's gray shaded right now, would not be allowed, the larger places would not be allowed in those districts. That's the extent of the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Steph, did you want to add anything?
Sure, so just kind of a little bit more nuance to this, and, you know, I feel like Joe and Bill might be, have a little bit more background on this. But I, so what originally happened is that Planet Fitness came to us and they said, we want to move. And we said, well, you can't, according to our bylaw, fitness centers are only allowed, as the definition says, has to be under 5,000 square feet. I believe that that was put in place because we wanted to protect the town center from large gyms going into the town center area because, you know, we wanted to keep the smaller fitness centers, your yoga studios, your fitness, you know, fitness together. And so what this does is it kind of creates new zoning, it creates a new use to fitness studios. So fitness studios are smaller studios that are aimed at, you know, the town center. So to, to protect that area for, you know, what I, what I think the intent of that zoning is. And then allow fitness centers up to 20,000 square feet. We changed that definition, so it's up to 20,000 square feet in the, in the, basically, the general business district, the limited business district, and the BN district, which we don't use. I don't know if there's even zoning for it, if there's even, if there's a parcel that does that. So what I did want to bring up quickly was just a zoning map for you guys to reference because I, I know what everything is zoned in my head, and that's why I'm the planning director. So basically, anything in red here, so down the bottom is 128. This area in the middle is the town center. So this area would only allow fitness studios of up to 5,000 square feet.
Wait, when you say this area, what?
Where are you, where are you? Move your mouse.
The town center overlay district is right there.
Thank you. Oh, right there, thank you.
Okay.
And so that's where fitness studios would be allowed.
Okay.
And then the rest of the red area in town, so you have your mall, your Middlesex, your Mall Road, up the Bauer Hockey area, that would allow fitness centers of up to 20,000 square feet, so.
The big red plot down there is what we're talking about?
Yeah, and all the other red.
Well, and all the others, sure, but the.
Just curious, how big is Lifetime?
A Lifetime is in a PDD, and it is much, much larger than 20,000 square feet. I do not know what the square footage of that is, but it's much larger. But it's separate from our general zoning, the zoning districts.
I believe it's over 100,000 square feet, if, yeah, it's, it's huge.
I'm just looking for reference.
So I guess the text amendment before you is, you know, is a fitness center, what you would be voting on for town meeting is basically, if you're voting in favor of this, you would be allowing 20,000-square-foot fitness centers to move into areas in town that are in the BG zoning districts, so the red zoning districts exclusive of the town center. So this area, you wouldn't be able to do it. The rest of the red areas, you would be able to do.
And there's already a height restriction, right?
Yes.
Just a note, when we bring this to town meeting, let's have a different color for the part of town meeting that's not allowed to have, so that we can say, all the red areas.
I can make a beautiful map for you.
Thank you. Okay. What's all the way at the top?
That is Plaza 62.
Ah, okay.
It's, just has always been there.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, so, thank you, and board members with questions?
So it's a while.
Wait, which should be a special part? Caleb?
I just want to just say, I found the as-built plan for Lifetime, that it is 398.
1,000 square feet.
Yeah, almost 400,000 square feet.
Wow. Understood.
So just to put in context.
So this will not be that big?
So what, 20,000 square feet versus 400,000?
Well, he said the current one is 25,000 square feet.
No, I was just wondering, I mean, you know, if we're going to start adding larger gyms.
Their current one is 25,000.
Their current one is 25,000.
25,000?
But with only 18,000 usable space.
18,000.
So I mean, like their tanning beds and massage beds, I'm guessing is...
So you're only really...
No, that is inclusive of the 18,000. There's just, it's, if you've been in there, it's a really funky layout.
I have been in there.
Yeah.
So what's not usable in there now?
There's a mezzanine that's included in square footage, yeah, and we don't, we don't use that.
So really, you, all you'd be picking up is 2,000 square feet, basically, of usable space, that's...
We're actually going down in, by moving.
I know, but of usables, because you're saying you're too tight where you're at.
No, I'm not saying we're too tight. I'm not saying we're too tight. I'm saying that it's not an appropriate offering. It's not a matter of the space. We're actually going down by probably about 500 square feet, but it's going to be a more, a better layout, better parking field, more accessible, and just a better functional facility.
Okay. Joe, are you done?
So, let's just, again, so that, you're talking about the, the, I call it the White Hen Plaza, but...
You're rage showing.
So that would be allowed there.
Is that the Bauer hockey plaza?
No, the...
62.
Plaza 62, right. So it would be allowed there?
Yes.
Past Video Village, you know.
It would be allowed in the Bauer, it would be allowed in the, what are the other ones you're saying?
The mall area and certain areas along...
Across from them, so you know where the Staples is. Any place where, any place other than the town center, any place where there's, like, where there's retail is essentially...
So where, Dandelion Green, that plaza, like, you know, in other words, any of those plazas.
Dandelion Green is Chipotle.
Oh, okay.
I miss the Dandelion Green, too.
Yeah, it was good.
Joe, are you done?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Brenda, please go ahead. You had started.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I was going back to the Lifetime thing, and while I am a Planet Fitness member, I'm also a Lifetime member during the summer anyways. I was just looking for a larger than 20,000 square feet, so maybe another larger bougie gym could come to Burlington and maybe whittle down Lifetime's prices, that's all.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I actually is in favor of this. This meets kind of what I would see as when they come before us is a zoning change, instead of what is kind of a pseudo-spot zoning. So this actually has multiple areas in town that's appropriate for larger fitness centers and excluding areas in town for the, to the fitness studios. So, yeah, I think this, this is a good use of a zoning change versus, again, I'm gonna say a phony spot zoning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have also, I'm actually in favor of it because I think it's very reasonable for people to afford, not everybody can afford Lifetime memberships, so I think it's a great thing.
I also would just like to add, I'm also in favor of this, especially that spot. I've seen that plaza alongside Bauer. Businesses just cycle in and out, and it's, I think, to draw more people to that area would be very advantageous for that plaza, which does sit in Burlington property. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
I agree. I have a question. The way this is written, for fitness center, it has to be more than 5,000 square feet and less than 20,000. Is there a reason why we would not allow smaller studios in those areas?
We, let me look...
Do we allow them in both? Because I want, so we allow fitness studios in these red areas as well?
Yes, if you look...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
If you look at the use table and you go off to fitness centers, it is...
Okay, there and there, okay.
Yep.
Then that's my only question, thank you. Okay, Bill? Joe?
So I'm, I'm kind of in favor, but my, my concern is that, like, I would hate to see a plaza, you know, like Wayside or, you know, the Dandelion Green Plaza, or some of these other that have boutiques and storefronts, all of a sudden become a 20,000-square-foot, you know, gym. I, I think there's a certain value to having these, you know, these smaller stores and not allowing, you know, a conglomerate to go in and take over, you know, five of them or six or seven of them or the whole plaza for that matter, right? It just changes the dynamic and the, and the feel of the whole plaza once that happens.
They can't take over the whole plaza unless it's a very small plaza, because they can't go up to 20,000, they can only go up to 20,000.
Well, I mean, some of these places are 5,000, you know, it could take over four or five, you know, could take over four or five.
Yeah, they could take up four or five of the spots, yeah.
Which, which, if you got a plaza that has seven, you know, storefronts, then all of a sudden, it's that and two little storefronts. So it changes the dynamic, it changes the feel and the, you know, the whole, of the whole plaza. And I think that, you know, we've, over the years, we've created some really kind of cool plazas in town, and I, I'd hate to see that go away. That being said, I think a location like we have here, that used to be the Star Market or, you know, Manny's, that's, to me, is a, is a great location for it. It's, it's already kind of set up for that, but I'd hate to see the same thing move into place and take over five or six locations, you know?
Madam Chair, can I address that?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. It is practically, practically not very feasible to do that because of the height requirements of a gym in most cases. We require minimum 15-foot ceiling heights, so a lot of the stores that you're talking about often don't meet. I will tell you right now, I talked to Wayside about going in there, and it wasn't feasible to go in there. Now, if you were to go in the LL Bean or something like that, you know, that's a different story, but when you talk about some of those boutique uses for a fitness center of our size or a similar competitor of ours, practically, it's not really feasible. I can't, I don't want to make false promises or anything like that, of course, because there are workarounds, right? But that's not very realistic. I mean, we even looked, I call it the Chuck E. Cheese Plaza. We looked there as well, and what's it, golf simulator now, but that was also not practical.
Yeah, and I, I agree, it's probably not likely. What I've learned in 34 years in these boards is whatever you don't anticipate, that's what happens.
It can happen, yes.
And that's, you know, you kind of, then afterwards, you're like, whoa, what did we just do? How did we just do that? Again, I love that location, I'd like, I like that idea, I think it suits you guys so much better than where you're at, and I think it doesn't change really the dynamic of that whole plaza, you know, for the, for the worse. It maintains what it is now, and there's a good use in there. So I, I'm wondering if there's a way to craft this...
It's wording, yeah, sometimes.
Maybe special permitted versus just, just by right?
It could be done, like, something to ask the proponent if they're, you know, they're amenable to that process or...
I like the idea of the special permit, knowing that there's conversations after this, and it's not just a by-right use. I would be more, more in support of a special permit. Is that something you'd be open to?
I think I'm sensing a consensus among the board members, so, you know, we're certainly looking to, you know, to address the question about the use. You know, this is the difficulty with the zoning bylaw amendment process, so we honored that, we're respectful of it, to avoid exactly this spot zoning issue with, here's a particular place we're going, here's a site plan, which, you know, I've been here for a couple of hearings now, and so I get that. We're amenable to doing that, obviously would love it to be by right, but, you know, we understand and I, you know, we, we hear the voices coming towards us, and, you know, we're amenable to something like that.
Okay. I think you are hearing some, I'm hearing some consensus. Did you have another question, Bill?
I'm also, thank you.
Zoning Board of Appeal, excuse me, CBRC and Land Use, anybody have questions?
About the restrictions of law?
It's just stupid, man.
We can't hear you.
No, we were talking about something separate before, we're talking about Plaza 62, and, oh, it got torn down, then something could go in there, but with, you can only build, you can't build more than 25% of the lot, and there's not 25% there to get a 20,000 square foot building there anyway. So...
Okay, any other questions or comments?
To the point of a special permit versus the by right, that's a really, it's another hurdle, which I would like to respect that, you know, the proponent doesn't want. So is it something that staff or we could look at before we just go ahead and arbitrarily say, "Yeah, we need a special permit," because if all of these BG areas are something where you really couldn't build it feasibly because there's not enough square footage on the land to do that, then we're putting a special permit in for no reason. But, you know, I kind of agree, it's by right, and you don't know what the unintended consequences are, but if we can do a little homework beforehand and figure out that maybe that's not possible in any of these properties, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Okay. Mrs. Byer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to concur that I think the zoning change is the better way to go instead of special permit. So I would concur.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think it's worth a little more, we have time...
Right.
...to really look at those particular parcels.
I understand, and I think it's, it's worth looking at that, but I do think there are some other benefits to the town. Sorry, block your ears, because when they come before us with a special permit, that gives us an opportunity to do things like work on landscaping and maybe add, you know, crosswalks where they're necessary, or things like that that we don't get to do if it's a by-right use. So there are some benefits to the town to having the applicant go through the special permit process. You can listen again now.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully, we're gonna pass the other, town meeting will pass the other regulations, and then you won't have to do that. I, I'm trying, I...
I understand.
I understand.
I understand. It's worth looking at, we're not gonna vote on this tonight.
Right, that's why I said we have time.
So I think it's worth checking out, and that's probably something, is that something you think you can achieve?
Yes, we might need to do, just thinking about a subcommittee on it, just to iron it out. So just for, make sure we're all above board, if we could have people, just somebody volunteer, a couple people volunteer for that.
This would be just to identify all the different properties and sort of do a almost quick feasibility as to whether or not this is possible?
I don't know, I was, correct me if I'm wrong, Cherry, but more look at the definitions to see if there's a, the definition, and see if there's a way, or did you want to do a sub...
No, that's not what she meant.
It's a mathematical calculation of what properties could this really affect...
Correct.
Currently. I mean, obviously, you can always rezone and combine parcels, and that's, you know, we can't, we can't do for that, but what are these parcels, these different plazas that are there, could this really affect?
Is...
And that's not Madam's...
Is that something the proponent could do?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know if, I mean, a lot, I mean, I don't know the interior square footage of all of the buildings that are currently on all of the parcels in the BG zoning districts.
I'm just not sure if it's, if it's of that much value, because we'd be evaluating the sites based upon what's there now.
Right.
And that can change.
That's right.
Buildings get knocked down and other things get built, so...
That's my concern, is more of that.
Talk to the conversation, please, for those of us who have hearing issues.
What's that?
Okay. I'm, I am questioning...
I didn't hear what you said.
...what value that study would give, would have, because we could only evaluate whether or not this type of use could go in based upon what's currently on the site, and that can change.
That's right.
It happens all the time. People knock buildings down and they build something with higher building height.
You know, you get a 20-year lease, next thing you know, they, okay, you're gonna sign the 20-year lease, we're gonna raise the roof, we're gonna raise the height of the bill, you know, I mean, things can change. It's not, you know, that's, again, anticipate the unantic, you know, the unexpected, and that's, you know...
But the, but the special permit process provides an extra level of safety, and it provides opportunity for the town to affect some of the other things going on, on the site. So it's just something for us to think about, we're not gonna vote on it tonight, but it's, I think, yes, Caleb?
Sally Willard does have her hand raised.
Thank you.
Would you like me to unmute her?
And, um, who was it?
Would you like me to unmute her?
Yes, please.
Okay. There is a request being sent to Sally.
Hello, Sally, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. As someone who lives kind of in this neighborhood, I, one of the things that, that I'd like to see, and I like the idea of the special permit, if that gives the board the, the ability to ask for things like crosswalks, because there used to be crosswalks going into the plaza, and there are not anymore. So it's, can be dangerous, but also, I'd like, I'd be interested in knowing how much traffic there is on a regular basis, largely because we have a, a traffic light there at the corner of Middlesex Turnpike Extended and Route 62, and it would, I think, be useful to know, especially for the, the neighbors and the people who live on Middlesex Turnpike Extended as well as Daniel Drive, what kind of traffic they're going, increase in traffic they're going to see. But I think that the, the potential for asking for some crosswalks, especially going from one side of Middlesex Turnpike to the other, if that is what you get with a special permit, I would say, let's go for the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Willard. I will, I will say regarding the traffic concerns, that Middlesex extension used to be Middlesex Turnpike. That same traffic light handled way more traffic than it's handling now. Way, way more traffic than could possibly be generated by your, this gym, no offense.
I was gonna say the same thing.
So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about the traffic, but thank you for, for bringing it up, and we should consider it. Joe?
Yeah, so, I mean, the other thing it allows us to do is, some of these, you know, these BG districts are closer to residential...
Yes.
...developments than, than other ones are, and I think it allows us to really, you know, kind of examine the impact on the residential surroundings, and that one in particular doesn't necessarily have as much by way of residential, but the, you know, the White Hen Plaza is like, like right in the middle of residential. So I think that's something it allows us to do as well, you know, kind of examine more, more than just, you know, the building itself, you know?
I agree with you, thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else online that wants to speak on this matter? Or in the room? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, may I motion to continue this matter at the Plague Award Meeting of December 7, 2023?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? 6-0, thank you.
Thank you again all for your time. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much, nice to see everybody again, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 6C, D? Is it 6D or is it 1D? 1D, yes. Public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 2 definitions and Article 5 dimensional requirements as they pertain to accessory use regulations related to the RO One Family Dwelling District submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee. I assume that Ms. Ellis will be presenting on this?
Sure.
Okay, oh, no, am I, am I catching you off guard?
No.
Oh, okay.
We don't have much...
Okay.
So can you put up the, whatever I sent you, is that the nameless?
I can. I will, I will bring it up.
So last meeting, we gave a brief overview, and we, we had our meeting, whatever that was last week, since we go by so fast, anyway, and we really haven't gone any further with, you know, refining the definitions. There are definitions that, you know, we're looking to clarify, that we really haven't gone any further with.
Okay. Okay.
You know, the, the actual definition, which I think is the key of all of this accessory use, is the definition of what a structure is. Because then, once you determine what the structure is, then the second key element is, does every structure need a permit? Or are there structures that don't need a permit as far as the accessory use structures? And so that's kind of the, the key of this whole article, is better definitions for the setbacks, the structures and the accessory structures. And then on the use table is, that key first paragraph, is what needs a permit.
Right. So the definitions have not changed since the last time we just, we looked at them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Correct. That's why I said we really haven't gone.
Okay.
There's, there's a, most of them are pretty well set as far as what we believe, but the definition of structure still needs a lot of refinement or
Okay.
agreement, I guess. It's not refinement, it's agreement.
Okay.
Consensus, yes. And so we're happy to take any feedback of, once, you know, as you read through these.
Okay. I didn't have any questions about them. I thought they were pretty clear. If we're going to do, do a new definition for structure, if we're going to try to vote on this at our next meeting, if you could send that, you know, as soon as possible, we could get that back and forth happening. And I know you're very good about sending those things in advance.
Right, but we don't have a meeting before your next meeting.
Oh, I know, but you can send the definition to staff?
Well, we don't have an updated definition.
Oh, you won't? Okay.
Yeah, that's the unfortunate part of it.
Oh, because you're not meeting. Okay.
So, um, yeah, so in order for this to be put on a warrant, it would need a recommendation of the planning board at the next meeting, so.
You can recommend against it or recommend for it. It still can go to the warrant.
I don't know. I'm wondering if maybe it's just, maybe it's just not ready. It's not so much that we don't want, I don't want to vote against it just because we don't have all the information. I, I think there's value in, in this and what you're doing, but if we don't have the definition to vote on, we can't vote. So then we'd all vote against it because we don't have the information when we're not really against it.
Right.
Maybe we need to postpone it, and although we do most of our zoning things in January, maybe it doesn't make sense to bring this one in January.
I think we've voted on many things to town meeting without a lot of things, particularly definitions, so I'd be okay with it.
But this is a definition.
Yeah, but I mean, if
Voting on.
Yeah, but I mean, we've voted on a lot of them that are very much piecemeal, and is it understood that they can revise it prior to a town meeting? Do you have a definition?
I mean, it can be revised, but it would, the, it would need to be amended on town floor.
Can we go forward with everything else but not that definition?
I guess what I understood from Liz is, so whatever version, I guess we'll call it, comes before your next meeting on the 7th, I guess, that's the one you make the recommendation of.
Okay.
That is my understanding, that then that's the one that goes to print.
Right.
Okay.
So unfortunate, that's unfortunate, because we'll have a meeting that we could refine that definition and could go into print the correct way.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know, correct is not the right word, but the
David.
version that ZBRC would like.
Okay.
So without a meeting before your meeting, then we'll have to amend it on the floor, which is true for any of the articles that either ZBRC or land use.
But you are going to be bringing a definition
Sure.
for a structure forward at our next meeting?
Yes.
So that is what we will vote on?
It's in there now. That's the latest version.
Okay. But you are intending to change it?
Well, we haven't finished that discussion.
Okay, okay.
It may be that one.
Okay.
It may not be that one. I don't think the one that, can you pull that one definition up, Liz?
Yeah.
Of course, the front.
Which, yeah, the structure.
Right. Any manmade building, construction, facility that's installed on the land.
Okay.
That was not generally regarded as a good definition, I think. We couldn't come to any consensus on that. The original definition is the one that's crossed out, and then the ones below that are ones that I had pulled from the Planner's Dictionary that we had kind of ruled out, but then this, this is, we were at 9:30 at our meeting after seven other warrant articles, and everyone said, we're done.
Well, and that's, that's fine. I think that we'll bring it forward, you'll bring it forward to us at the next meeting, and we can decide then if, I mean, it's possible that we could vote on everything and decide just to postpone structure. But we'll see.
Well, we wouldn't, wouldn't put forward the article without
Okay.
that structure. That's the whole key.
So I, I just have a question from my perspective, just what is this warrant article looking to solve? What problem is, are we looking to solve it?
So the, the original reason for bringing all this forward is the change from interpreters, the inspector of buildings. When we have the change of inspector of buildings, interpretations changed. The prior inspector interpreted the bylaw to say, as a state building code, anything underneath 200 square feet was, did not require any kind of permit. So therefore, many of the sheds or little structures went anywhere. They went anywhere in the yard because there was no permit, so it did not, they went in the setbacks.
Right.
The current inspector now believes that everything needs a permit, really for zoning purposes, so that it's not in the setback.
Okay.
Not so much that it needs a building permit for building purposes. And so there have been a lot of miscommunications and, you know, on residents' part about, well, wait a minute, you know, theirs is in the setback, but mine can't be in the setback. So all of this relates around what needs a permit. And the current inspector said, the more definitions you can give me, and the more concrete what needs a permit, then I don't have to interpret, and therefore that's, it doesn't solve the problem of the past, but it will solve the problem going forward.
Right, makes it clearer.
So, Madam Chair, if we're talking about, so I'm just kind of reading, I'm sorry, I'm kind of just reading through, you know, the definitions here right now. And if we're talking about sheds and things of that nature, you know, those are permanent structures, so.
Therein lies also the problem, is what is a permanent structure?
So, I mean, should we have, no, I mean, we have to, because this is, this is part of the problem, right? If, if it's a shed and it's on bricks, it's not a permanent structure, that can be moved.
So. If it's, if it's not a permanent structure, then the bylaws say it's temporary, which means you have to move it every year. And so the sheds that are being put in and structures like that aren't being moved, so that
Even if they're moved two inches, they're still being moved.
Right.
I mean, even if the land shifts on its own, it has moved. So, I mean, is there, yes, I am going down a rabbit hole.
There you are.
Do we need a structure, a definition of a structure, a permanent structure and a temporary structure?
Well, we have a definition of temporary structure,
Okay.
which is the one that is anything less than a year. So therefore, if it's not temporary, it's permanent. So therefore, anything that's sitting on a brick on the ground is permanent.
I don't know about you, but I've never moved my shed.
Right, and they don't.
I have.
You've moved your shed?
I have.
I moved mine every year.
Again, this is why we haven't gotten, this has been like a two-year process kind of thing.
Right, well, I know the ZBA had an issue the other day, there was a, there's somebody, yes.
There's been many.
I think it was just like last week or about this situation as, as it stands.
And so the clearer we can make the actual bylaw, just like you want to make your regulations about parking in January, the clearer everything is made, then there's less room for interpretation.
Right, and less confusion. Thank you.
I understand. If there's, if there's that many issues about having the definition of structure, I think we should probably have it before we bring it to town meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Has Town Council weighed in on this? I know she's provided me with some, some comments for my, what I've submitted on behalf of the board. Has she given you any feedback thus far about?
Not with regard to the structure definition, we've been working with Inspector Buildings, but with regard to one of the other definitions, the building height definition, she weighed in.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Eiler, did you have a question or a comment?
I did.
Please, please come forward for the microphone. Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly which topic we're on, I'll admit. I thought we were on one, we're not on 1H, which is where I thought we were going.
No, we're on 1D.
Right, but we seem to be discussing a lot of things in 1H, so.
Okay.
In particular, the definition of structure, which is why I came here. Anyway, I'm John Eiler, town meeting member, precinct 6. 1H is definitions, I think.
The, the 1H is the use table.
Oh, oh, okay. We were looking for an H on our agenda, which, and there isn't one.
No, no, I actually was looking at the agenda.
There's no H on our agenda.
Is this an H?
I thought there was.
Well, in any case.
Well, at any rate, let me, let me not argue about that.
Okay.
The, so in particular, I did have concerns about changing the definition of structure, at least as defined there. So the proposed definition is any manmade building, construction or facility that's installed on the land. And in particular, it's removing the phrase permanent location in the soil, so.
That's not the definition that's, I mean, that's where we're in the process of.
Right, that's the, that's the proposed definition, is to remove
For now.
Is to, for the current proposal, that's all I can talk about, right? So in particular, I would say there's a lot of issues with that. By, with the proposed, current proposed new definition, that, I think, would include things like dog houses and play structures, a jungle gym, sheds, so all kinds of things all of a sudden become structures. And if you, and if, you know, and I'm sure Sheri's done this, if you, if you search for zoning bylaws for the word "structure," it's in there about 100 times easily. So I would suggest before we go mucking with a pretty key word like that, you actually look at every single use of that word and make sure you really mean it. Because in particular, you know, a few of the key places I saw were, you know, in 2.4 there's demolition of structures, so now obviously you need a demolition permit for your doghouse. There's, there's this confusing 219 solar ground-mounted arrays, which are not mounted to a structure. So I don't know what that would even mean, given that it would be a structure now. Then there's, you know, 912 occupancy permits, you would now need an occupancy permit for your playground or your doghouse.
I, I see where you're going.
Yeah, so you really do not want to be changing that word. I would say if, if there's something that's not being covered now with setbacks or something like that, maybe you need a new word that you wanted to apply to, but, you know, it's really dangerous changing the word "structure," so I would recommend not doing that until you make a whole long paragraph about what you really intend.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I, I think we probably all need to have some discussions offline about whether or not this is ready to move forward. Yes, Caleb?
Zi Wang has her hand raised online.
All right, Ms. Wang?
Request to unmute.
Hey, Mary?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, there's a comment to Sheri. Sheri, thank you for working on this, and are, can you make a clear, you know, differentiation between like accessory structure versus structure? Because just by reading Liz, I'm not too sure to say like a ground patio, right? Ground patio, that's like a permanent, pretty much, right? And, but it's also manmade.
It's immobile, isn't it?
Would it be accessory or would it be structure? I can't tell.
Right. So there is, there is a definition for an accessory structure, but again, in our conversations that we're having is, what is the structure?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Are there, do we need to have exclusions for that? There are exclusions in the building code, you know, fences under six feet and oil tanks, and there are definite exclusions. Do we need to include them in our zoning bylaws? So there are the conversations that we're still having.
Okay.
Obviously, as I said, you know, that's what, that's the key.
Right. And I think this, I mean, I think it's great that you're doing this, and it's a really valuable discussion to have. I just, I'm just not sure it's ready to go in January, because there's so little time for us. We only have one, we have one meeting, you don't even have one.
Well, right, and I think that was prior to my conversation with Liz.
Yeah.
My understanding was we had two more meetings, because we had yours, and then we had ours. So that we thought
Right.
by that time, what we could
Right. So So knowing this, maybe you and Liz and I can have a discussion next week about whether or not we can, should wait on this.
Yep.
Because we, I think we need, we just, we want to do it right. You've put a lot of work into it, and I think
Absolutely. Again, unintended consequences.
Right.
We don't want anything that, you know.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none?
Madam Chair, may I like to make a motion to continue this matter at the planning board meeting of December 7th, 2023?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Okay. Next item is item 1E, a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2 definitions, to add a definition for middle housing submitted by the planning board.
Let me share my screen again. No, it's not. Just opening up the presentation that I had for this. Essentially, we are proposing a simple, just, just a definition for middle housing. I'm sorry, what am I, changed, updated, and I'm all... Okay.
There we go.
So, so, you know, basically, you know, why did we, why did we do this? What's the impetus for doing this? This is simply adding a definition of middle housing. And so, you know, we have a lot of data, and, you know, from our housing needs assessment that was done in 2022, and, you know, from the Housing Partnership and MAPC, that, you know, and just looking at our housing stock, we have very divergent housing stock options. We have single-family homes, and we have a lot of multifamily options, but larger multifamily. So there's a missing middle, and that's what it's, in the planning community, what it's referred to as, housing that's not 100 units of multifamily and not single-family. It's your duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. It is your townhomes, it's your condos, it's a lot of thinking about, you know, things, thinking about a lot of the housing that has actually been put in the town center. So I think about the stuff that's behind Mariposa, not, not Mariposa, it's behind CVS, sorry, behind CVS. There are some condos next to the Historic Commission, building across from Town Common that are condos. And so, you know, this is just a definition to kind of like put our foot in the water a little bit.
Right.
So again, middle housing is housing types that fall between single-family and mid-rise apartment complexes, so this is the classic view of what middle housing types are. So, you know, and, you know, a typical New England, like I think manor house, a typical New England house that has, it's an old mansion that's been condoized. I live in Beverly, tons of them all over the place, so, you know, and you wouldn't even know it, because it all, it looks like a one house. So that gets us to the definition. I'm going to get to, so the definition is, a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes. And then, why is this kind of important? It's important for a couple of reasons. First is that, you know, what I just said, we have two types of housing, not many options. There's not a lot of options for families that are, people that are looking to downsize, younger families, employing ease, who are looking to reduce their commute time. And so, and this was talked about at the, when we did the housing needs assessment, they really talked about the life cycle of housing. And so this graphic kind of shows that, and I'll zoom in on it, because I think it's important to think about. I don't, you know, I don't think a lot of people think about it. So, you know, you have, you know, your family, your kids grow up, they go to an apartment complex, they, maybe they moved to one of the apartments in town. They get married. They can afford a million-dollar house in Burlington, but they want to stay in Burlington. Where do they go? There aren't any options for young couples who are just starting out to kind of get their foot in the door here. Therefore, you know, it's, they can't, it breaks the cycle. So if they wanted to have a kid, they, you know, they would have to start out in a million-dollar house. And it's the same thing for our older couples, older, older people. They're stuck in their houses, in their big houses that are meant for families to move in, because they have no place to go, and they don't want to leave town, they don't want to leave their friends, they don't want to leave, you know, where they've been their want to leave their friends. They don't want to leave, you know, where they've been their whole lives. And so I think that's kind of the impetus for why we want to add this definition to our bylaw. It does not create any new zoning. It does not dictate where these types, this type of use will go. It's just kind of getting town meeting, thinking about it, getting the conversation started. So with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Open it up.
Okay, thank you. First, I'll see if my board members have any questions. Joe?
I understand the thought process about getting people to think that way, and I think it's a good idea. I'm just not sure it's, it must feel like to incorporate it in when we don't have any zoning for it is almost a little premature. It's like the cotton before.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that, Joe, and I'm still not sure about it myself. There's, we thought, should we bring forward the definition, talk about what middle housing is and why it's necessary, and then separately, in a time in the future, say, here are some places we think middle housing should go and try and do some rezonings, or should we do it all together? And we talked back and forth about that a lot. I'm not sure which way is better. I'm open to hearing what everyone else thinks.
I have one question, too.
Yes.
Liz, so could they put something like this in a very residential area, if it was like single-family homes, and then somebody decides I want to put a duplex, just make it, you know?
Well, because-
If it's not zoned.
Your home, well, I think, I don't know where you live, but where most of us live, we're living in single-family homes. Those are zoned RO for single-family residences.
Well, I'm saying this isn't zoned yet, right?
This is just a definition. So it's not allowed anywhere, right? Well-
Oh, okay.
Holy P D Ds, right?
Yeah.
It wouldn't even go anywhere until it gets zoned, is what you're saying.
Correct. So then, at some point in the future, the idea would be, at some point in the future, we would identify an area that was appropriate for middle housing. It would not be someplace that's already-
I think that would be a common question, going to town meeting, that people are going to think, though. So to let them know, it's not zoned yet, so you don't have to worry. I think that would be the worry of-
I think you're right. And so that brings me back to, I'm not sure if we, the idea, I think, was let's get the definition out there, get people thinking about it, let them think about middle housing and vote on whether or not this is a good definition before they have to think about where it should go. But if the concern is, and it may be a very valid concern, is that no one's really going to think about this by itself, they're just going to be thinking, where are you going to put it?
That's exactly right.
Then maybe they have to go together. And that's what I'm looking to hear from you.
I just think if that's clear, I think people will understand that so much better.
I think because we're all in, like, we're in the thick of planning and zoning and, you know, land use. I agree. You know, our mind is, okay, well, you know, we bring forth a definition, and this is, you know, this is the next step. Somebody who isn't, you know, in the weeds of all of this is going to come back and ask those questions, too. And they might actually come back with fear, saying, are you going to change that to my neighbor, my neighborhood going to change?
It'll be a concern in a lot of people's minds, right?
So why don't we do this? Why don't we talk a little bit about whether or not we think this is a good definition? We don't have to bring it forward by itself to decide amongst ourselves if we like the definition. And then, you know, at some point in the future, we need to talk about where we think appropriate areas are for middle housing. Are you feeling comfortable with this?
So just to clarify, so you just want to talk about, you know, making sure that we like this definition, and then either are you saying that we would bring it forward?
I think we have to talk about whether or not we want to bring it forward in January, if we want to wait and bring it forward in May or in September, along with a plan to zone at least one area that we think is appropriate for it. Because I think, I've had a lot of discussions with people about middle housing, and a lot of people react with concern. But if you start talking about specific areas that make sense for middle housing, that provide a benefit for the residential properties that are near them and the business properties that are near them, the fear goes away, and it makes sense. And sometimes it's hard to make sense of it if you don't know where.
I just think the clarity of where, and that because I do think we need middle housing because people don't, everything she said is so true. They don't have, you can't downsize, you can't, you know, if you can't afford a million-dollar house, you can't stay in town, and that's your familiarity. I think it's needed. I just think that clarification would make it a really big selling point.
So it sounds like you are all answering the question that I've been asking in my own head. Do we do this in two steps, or do we do it together? You're saying do it together, right?
Yeah, because the first question someone's going to ask themselves is how does this affect me?
Where it's going to go.
Not even where it's going to go, how does this affect me? And if we're like, don't know yet, they're going to be like, I don't care then.
Just approve it. It's fine.
Yeah.
I think we should allow.
I think there's some very appropriate place. I mean, it's-
Yes, there are.
Really, it is one of those things that you would, you know, when you're downtown here, you really would love to have that type of housing downtown. You don't want single-family down there, but you don't want bigger apartment complexes either. You want the middle housing, and that's, you know, so I think it'd be easy to identify some, you know, some periods that we-
So timing-wise, staff, do you think, timing-wise, we would be able or ready to bring something, not the whole plan for the whole town, but a small area that we think is appropriate for middle housing, along with a definition in May?
You know, I think that with MBTA communities, it might be tough. I just, I'm just letting you know.
Because of confusion or because of time for staff?
Both.
Okay.
Both. Time for staff and also confusion. Like, even if we were fully staffed, I would, I would, you know, I would be worried about the confusion with MBTA communities and people getting overwhelmed.
I also think we should allow some time for some, like, proper education before trying to bring it forward. If you are hearing a lot of fears about middle housing, I think there-
The only fear I'm hearing is where is it going to go?
That's right.
Or more specifically, you're not going to put that in my neighborhood, are you?
But then I think that's the thing.
Yes.
People having that reaction, regardless of where it's going, like, why, I think there needs to be some education around, this isn't something you should be fearful of, even if it's close to your, even though the intent is not to put it in a single-family location, even if it is close, like, what are you fearful of?
The property value, I think. That would be the obvious thing.
Right. But as soon as you start discussing specific places, the fear goes away.
Yeah, I mean, it's density, you know, I mean, it's density. It's more density than you would want in single-family neighborhoods.
But we're talking, we're not talking, though, an apartment complex.
No.
But it's still denser than exists in single-family houses.
But we're not talking about rezoning, single-family.
I understand, but that's the concern. That would be the concern, would be, look, it's not, it's not-
It changes the neighborhood.
It shouldn't be scary, but it shouldn't be scary in the right location.
Right. As soon as you talk about specific locations, it just makes sense.
That's right.
So I do understand, I do think we should bring them together. I just don't want to see this get delayed for another year. So I want us to come up with an aggressive, but doable schedule.
I agree with that. I would also, I mean, it's not just identifying where we would put it, you have to draft zoning for it.
Yes.
So that would be something that I would probably, you know, want to work with a consultant who is familiar with this type of housing and zoning for this type of thing. And know if we had an idea, you know, to kind of do some workshops on it, do education and all that stuff. So, you know, I would feel more comfortable bringing this to next September.
Okay. Can we make that a goal?
You know, I think, I think it's a reasonable goal to try and have it, you know. Depending on how it goes, we always have January when that's what we do zoning, right?
Right. That's what I don't want to do, though. I don't want to wait a whole year.
Okay.
But how come? I'm just curious. If we're going to get it right, I mean-
I think we can get it right by September, that's why.
Okay.
And I think there's a need for it, and I think we've been dragging our feet on this for a while, frankly. And I also think that this, this could be a very big benefit, not just to the people who would be living in these homes, but also to the communities on either side, the business communities and the residential communities that bought them.
I think that's the key, right? I mean, the key is, it is a great thing for the business communities, and that's, you know.
And it's a great thing for the residences as well, because they would be placed in someplace, it would be upzoning. We would not be taking residential properties and zoning them multifamily. We would be taking something that's perhaps industrial and upzoning it to middle housing. It actually makes the property more valuable, and it's a better use if it's next door to residential. So, all right. I am comfortable, if everyone else is, I don't know if we have to vote on this, not bringing this in January, but I'd like to make it a goal for our staff to ask them to get it ready and hire consultants and do whatever needs to happen so that we can bring it forward in September and move aggressively. What does everyone think of that?
I'm okay with that.
Good.
Yeah, okay. Liz?
No, I just want to say that the fact that this conversation is happening, I think, is a huge benefit.
Okay.
It's like great dialogue. It's super helpful. So I think the, you know, the goal of what we wanted to do was to-
Yeah, have this conversation. So now that we're having the conversation, we have members of other committees here. Would you like to join?
Want to say anything?
Kathy?
I would agree that having, you have to have a plan for the definition, right? Just as we talked about, you know, in the previous article, structure, with middle housing with nothing to go around it, will just cause anxiety already on different issues. I did have a question for Liz. I don't know, at C B R C meeting, we talked about the confusion or possible confusion of the definition of middle housing. We have a definition for two-family and three-family. How, and you were going to maybe ask town council, how is two-family, it seems confusing if we have a two-family definition, a three-family definition, and a middle housing definition, at least to me. Which one is it, if you're going to put a two-family in, is it a two-family, or so?
Can I piggyback on?
Things like that.
Of course. So my question was looking at this middle housing rather than a specific definition. It looks like an umbrella term to me. It's not the specifics. And so, looking at that difference, because I'm looking at the definition of middle housing, and now it's going to encompass all of this, except that you still have all those individual classifications. And so if we start to talk about middle housing as an umbrella term, I think that helps people to start to wrap their brain around it, because then you do get into, all right, so is this a condo?
Middle housing includes, yeah.
Are these townhouses? Or are, yes. And so middle housing, when we're looking at planning, it's a useful term for planning. I would see it as that, and maybe you've got middle housing, and then underneath you have all the categories.
Yeah. I mean, I think where I do it, I would do it kind of like a form-based code where you have different types, and as a developer, you pick the type, and there are certain standards, and it would, you know, it would allow to have certain standards denied for this type of housing. Because again, comparable in scale and form of detached single-family is kind of that-
Very vague.
It's very, but not even, I think, you know, if you're going to interpret that, it has to look like the neighborhood, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
It can't look like the Tremont. It has to.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I think we should continue this, but I don't think we should continue it to the December 7th meeting. Perhaps we could continue it to the first meeting after town meeting as a discussion.
Yeah, I think-
Does that sound?
What's that date?
Let me try. I got it.
Excellent. Thanks.
Hold on.
Meetings. That would be February 1st, 2024.
Sounds good.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on this matter to the planning board meeting of February 1st, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. All right. Next up is Item 1F,
a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws Article 5, general regulations to update parking requirements submitted by the planning board.
Yes, so I'm going to scroll. We're going to skip this. So this is a change to, it's called general regulations, but it's mostly our parking bylaw, where it gives us, you know, minimum, maximum parking requirements, and, you know, the size of each parking stall and all that type of thing. And so basically, the purpose of this amendment is to basically streamline the entire section, formalize expected standards in order to make it more user-friendly for both staff, residents, and commercial enterprises, so people coming in are better able to interpret it. It's more straightforward. It's in a table. Right now, all of our parking requirements are written out in sentence form, which is, you know, not easy to just go in quickly and use as a reference. And then, so then what are major changes, additions to the bylaw? So the biggest thing is to update our minimum and maximum parking requirements to the latest Institute of Traffic Engineers, so the I T E, which is a nationwide organization. They publish a parking generation manual. They have traffic engineers from all over the country contribute, who go out and count parking and parking usage at different types of uses all around the country. So this is kind of the standard with which they use. And so this would be bring our bylaw into that standard. I've been here eight years, and I don't believe we've ever touched this bylaw, this section of, or this article at all. So that's kind of, you know, modernization is kind of a theme. It allows, it provides specific parking reduction methods, so it allows for more flexibility for, you know, spaces that don't have a ton of parking. So if you have, if you're a space with not as much parking, if you are close to a bus stop, you can reduce your parking requirements. If you do ride share, if you have, you know, so it allows for additional flexibility. It adds design standards for off-street parking facilities. So if you're coming in with a new site plan and you are building a parking lot, it needs to meet certain standards. I feel like with the board, a lot of the discussion with new proponents coming in to build something is all about the parking and the layout, and can you add more trees here and landscaping? And so I think that this will kind of make it more standardized. And then, again, structured parking facilities, we don't have any, any design standards for those at all. So this adds that, which I think is very useful. And then there's an additional, so landscaping requirements for all commercial properties. There's another section at the end that this updates. And so that is kind of high level. It's basically, I was speaking to town council about it yesterday, and it's basically, it's almost a full kind of takeout, old, put in new. And so I think in your packet, there is the, there is all the text and stuff, and I did get some, Sheri, which were helpful and V D R C. But I'm kind of opening it up to questions. I'm going to bring up the document, and if you have any questions, concerns, things you've noticed. I have to reshare. There we go. So Sheri. So a lot of this, if you kind of just look through it, you know, it's adding, adding new definitions. So parking aisle and dimensions. So we currently only have dimensions for standard 90-degree parking. There's no dimensions for parallel parking, 45 degrees, 60 degrees. So these are all standards that you would see in most other cities and towns that they would have a table for, you know, off-street parking. And then you get into the parking table, and so it adds specific uses for each parking type. And so parking requirements. So it's a lot to-
It's a lot.
I know. I did give an overview of this at the last thing we were giving. If there are any questions, concerns?
No, it's a lot to absorb. I've read it more than once, and I still think each time I go through it, I find something else that I didn't realize was in there, because it is a lot to absorb. I think it's really great, and I think there's, I'm really excited that some of this is standardizing things that we ask for over and over and over again. And now developers will come in, they'll be able to read this and know what's expected of them before they come to us. And I think it should streamline things. Board members, questions? Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one with regard to compact parking and standard parking. Is there anything in the U.S. standard about percentages for that?
Is there anything in the U.S. standard? So are, so as far as U.S. standards?
Yeah, you said there was a U.S. standard with regard to-
Oh, so for I T E, that's just parking counts. But I think that our parking, so we do have, we're not changing our current parking, compact car parking space. It's not bolded. I think it is fairly standard. It's, ours is not outside of the normal range.
I don't think that's what you meant, though.
Percentage standpoint?
You meant like, if in a parking lot, percentage of the spaces could be compact versus regular.
I don't know, but that's a great question. Is that something that you would want to see?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's a good idea.
We get somewhere, there's a lot of compact, and then we would argue, or I would argue that the percentage of compact cars versus what is proposed is probably a lot less than if one's driving big cars.
Yeah.
More SUVs.
I think that would be valuable, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Yes, Jess.
Are we defining where like electrical, electric vehicle parking is in here? Are we defining where like electrical, electric vehicle parking is in here?
We are not. It's kind of one of those things that I'm trying to use up to the market, to kind of dictate that, you know, if, it's a thing that, I think that, you know, market will dictate that.
I mean, more like, where? Like, are we saying they fall under the standard car space size? Are we, okay.
I would say that they probably have to, yes. I can ask if it needs to be discussed, but I mean, I don't think it makes sense if EV parking spaces is compact.
Right, no. Right. Okay. Thank you, Jess. Joe?
Was actually exactly the issue I always wanted to bring up, because I know we've had this discussion, and I more have, you know, looking in terms of locations of EV, you know, because we've had that discussion with the mall, and we've had further discussion about the handicap parking spots and the EV spots, and, you know, them telling us, well, there's nothing we can do about it, but if we create the standard within the town, and if they want to bring them in, then they'll have to be something they do about it, you know what I mean? In other words, I think we need to be thinking about this EV stuff, because it's, you know, it's, there's going to be no denying it, you know, we've seen some of it now, but we're going to be seeing more and more as time goes on, right? So, I think we need to incorporate that somehow in here.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Okay. ZBRC and land use, any comments, questions, thoughts?
I sent comments.
Okay.
So, I think just two general comments to really focus on is the accessible parking, and updating the language for that, and the regulations for that, that seems to be not updated in this part. And then also the table, I would think that the table of different types of parking should match what's in our use table, so there's a couple of things that are in this table that we don't have, and there's things that, you know, don't necessarily match our use table, so those two, that table should kind of match up with ours. We have, it says, you know, we have a health fitness club, an athletic club, a racket tennis club, so those are the things that, just look at our use table for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Is there anyone online on either ZBRC or land use that wanted to speak on this? See, no one? Anyone in the room? Online, not in a committee? No? Okay.
Actually...
Joe?
I just thought of something, an issue I'd brought up in the past, and I think it's, you know, more, when we have people conducting this, so we talked a lot about when, you know, we had the auto pots center come in, when they were talking about going down to downtown center, we were saying, well, we don't want them, you know, changing wipers out in the parking lot, we don't want them changing batteries in the parking lot, but we have establishments now that are actually doing business and, you know, changing transmissions and radiators in the parking lot, so...
So maybe what you can do in a parking lot?
What can you do in a parking lot, right? I mean, that's, you know...
And what you can't do in a parking lot.
Parking lot, you know...
Yeah. That makes sense. What you, here are the only things you're allowed to do in a parking lot.
Right.
And we can define those as very strictly, probably.
Maybe store buses in a parking lot.
Store buses in a parking lot.
Is it a parking lot, or is it a storage?
Is there a bus storage parking lot? A bus storage lot?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do this, maybe we can try and wrap all these together.
Like there was the additional vehicles that I just, I haven't driven by it, no. I know that Mark has cited them.
Okay.
Can you use a car in a parking lot for signage?
No.
Well, we condition that, that's a standard condition that we usually put in.
As long as you move them every couple of days.
Maybe people that, you know, have low homes, like they say with Walmart people are allowed, or Walmart allows people to stay overnight in the lot.
Oh, really? Oh.
Yeah, so I don't know if we have that in our current bylaws, or...
I didn't even know they could do that.
Yeah, I think they, the company allows it, I don't know if it's on a town-by-town basis.
From what I understand, like if you, it depends upon the manager, or, you know, whoever owns the Walmart, that's...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think this is great, there's all these things that we hadn't thought of.
This is helpful, guys.
Yes, yeah.
Not to belabor this one either, but the Rhino, you know, we put a Rhino in a parking lot, right?
Yeah.
We put, you know, goodwill containers in a parking lot, you know, they take up parking spaces, like these are things that...
We should think about.
Yeah, I mean, it should all be thought, you know, into...
Yeah. So, I would suggest then that, I mean, Liz is taking notes, there's a lot to go through here, as you go through it, we're all going to be thinking of other things, please send your notes to Liz quickly, so that she can incorporate some of these things before our meeting on the 7th, and Liz will send stuff out to us before the 7th, so we have time to read it all and absorb it all before the next meeting. Okay? All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to continue this discussion until Planning Board meeting of December 7th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Six-zero. Where are we? Item G, a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws by updating and modernizing Article 2, Definitions in Article 4, Section 4.2.0, principal use regulation schedule submitted by the Planning Board.
All right. So I'm sharing things.
This is housekeeping for the most part, right?
This is, so it looks extremely complicated and super-duper intimidating, but the intent of this is not that. So, let me, I'm going to bring up, before we get into the leads, I'm going to start at the beginning. So...
I don't know why I just changed the thing.
Okay, here we go. So, basically, you know, high level, what is the purpose of this amendment? Why am I bringing it to town meeting? To modernize it, you know, to bring the use table up to 20% by streamlining it, removing obsolete uses, and adding modern uses, to make it more user-friendly for staff, residents, and then also people who want to come in and conduct businesses here, that it's easier to just kind of flip through and see, and it's streamlined. So, we're going to go through kind of each of those three things, we're eliminating obsolete uses that are currently still in our bylaw, like dance halls, and sanatoria, and retail dealers, and grain and animal feed from when we had big parks. So, we're taking us out. It does mean that by taking out that use, that it's going to be, you know, illegal to do those things, but those uses will probably fall into another category. We're going to consolidate related uses in the use table. So, we have all of these different things for public, we have like five different, you know, uses for public facilities. Why not consolidate them into one use category, you know, public facilities? Boom. And then the last thing is, is to add modern uses. So, you know, we're adding commercial recreation facilities, so indoor and outdoor, so, you know, your indoor soccer facilities, that's, you know, rock climbing walls, you know, betting cages, whatever, or adding collaborative workspaces, so if you work from home and you need a space to get out and go to an office, you can do that, brewery, distillery, winery, cidery, so that is a use that we're thinking, you know, would be something cool to include, shared creative workspace and industrial arts facility, and I know that a member of ZBRC was kind of wondering, what is that? And it is, it's kind of a more modern use, it's basically a space, usually an old industrial site, where people in the creative economy will get together and join, because they have all of the equipment there, so you'll have, like potters, you'll come to a place, and you'll, you know, you'll join, or sign up.
Like the mills in Lowell.
Yeah, they have them in Somerville, and Cambridge, just kind of, kind of cool. Vendorsport, mobile food markets, Parklets, that type of thing. So, adding, adding new definitions.
What's appiculture?
Appiculture? Bees.
Oh, that's bees. Oh, okay.
You took away the dance hall, like...
I know, we can't have fun here. No, no fun here. I think it would be categorized as something else.
I know, I'm teasing.
And then also, just making it more user-friendly, so to truncate overly wordy uses in the use table. If you look at our use table, each use is a paragraph of text, when it shouldn't be a paragraph of text. It should just be a phrase, and then the paragraph of text is moved into the definitions section. So if you want to get deeper into what a public transportation facility is, you're going to go to the definitions section of our bylaw, and that's going to outline passenger stations, landing fields, buildings, you know, that's going to outline, kind of go deeper into it. And then obviously, you know, housekeeping, it's going to be renumbered, to kind of update all of that. And so, now I'm going to kind of show you how to read this, because I honestly didn't know how to display this and convey it to you guys in a way that was, I didn't know how to, the best way to do it, so this is, this is how my brain worked. And if there's a better way, let me know. So, I, up on the town meeting website, there is a, there's an Excel spreadsheet, and then there is a section of definitions, which is the definitions section of our bylaw. And so, I'm going to zoom in on this. So there's a key in the corner, but basically what you're seeing is, the red is what our current bylaw is, the blue is the truncated uses, and then what you'll see, kind of at the end of each one of these sections, you'll see, you'll see, you'll see sections that don't have any red text next to them, and those are the new uses that are being added. And the uses, the new uses that are being added have their own, you know, is it allowed in a certain district, is it not allowed in a certain district, and does it need a special permit? And so, that is, you know, I was at land use last night, I said, you guys, for you guys, it would be really helpful for you guys to look at these uses, and, you know, is this an appropriate thing to be in these districts? So, that is kind of the down and dirty of it. One thing is, we haven't changed the existing use table, except to consolidate it. We haven't, and the ones that have been eliminated are exactly the ones that I read out loud. And so you'll even see up here, I'll even tell you like where things have been consolidated. And so, I guess, that's my explanation of what this is, I'm open to feedback, comments, concerns, clarification. This is a lot.
A lot.
Recognize that.
I will read it when I have my glasses with me.
I know, that's the other thing, I printed it out, but it really is something you need to look at online, which is why I've been, I've been really diligent in making sure that Amy has the latest version.
Okay.
And that it's in an Excel, that you can zoom in on it online. And that's why you kind of need to have both sections with you, right? So you can kind of make sure that the two are referenced, the definitions and the definitions.
Okay. So we need to spend more time with it, but do we have any questions, not getting specific because we haven't had time to read it through? Any general questions?
I like the format. You did a good job. Thank you.
Anyone?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Nobody online? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of December 7th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Okay. This concludes the joint meeting of the Planning Board Land Use Committee and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. From here, we will begin our regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of the Planning Board Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Six-zero.
I can make a motion to call to order this meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Great. First item on the Planning Board agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here in the audience or online who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda? Please make yourself known. Sheen Nun, let us move on to announcements.
Well, we are coming up to the holiday season, so the Thanksgiving holiday is next week, so on Wednesday, November 22nd, Town Hall will close at 12:00 PM, noon that day. The next day is Thanksgiving, that Thursday, November 23rd, and as well as Friday, Friday, November 24th, Town Hall will be closed all day.
Really? Somebody with their hand up.
Okay, I don't know who that is. Can we...
Request, Ruth, a request should show up on your screen right now.
I just did it on you, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Can you just give us your name, because we did not hear the first part of what you were saying?
My name is Ruth Rea, I live on Luther Road. Are you planning to discuss Item F, the petition to amend the article on wireless communication? Was that part of the agenda?
Um, wireless communication, no. Can't we, we continue that, right?
Continue that.
Yes, we continued that at the beginning of the meeting, you may not have been present at that time, we're not going to be discussing it.
It was at 6:00, was it before 6:00?
No, it was right at the top of our meeting, when we had it...
I missed it, I'll send you an email, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm so sorry, she was waiting all this time.
Well, she would, that, she probably loved watching our entertainment. How could you not want to sit through all that?
All right, so now I've lost my place.
We're at home just to watch us.
Okay, folks, we have more announcements?
Yes, we do. So, the following week, the Sculpture Park Committee will be meeting Wednesday, November 29th, and that will be at 8:00 AM, and that will be virtual via WebEx. The Burlington 5K Turkey Trot is this Sunday, November 19th, and that's at 8:00 AM, and you can...
Is it Sunday or Saturday?
If you got this off the website, then it's Sunday.
I can...
Hold on, I'm looking. I forget. Whatever she took out. Do Burlington reckon that was...
Event calendar. Yep, the 19th, Sunday, the 19th, at 8:00 AM. That's how they have it on the Burlington Parks and Recreation website.
That's not me.
Then, moving further into holiday season, tree lighting on the Common is happening on Sunday, December 3rd, and that will be at 4:00 PM on the Burlington Town Common. Please celebrate with the Burlington Parks and Recreation, our neighbors, friends, and family for the 50th Annual Holiday Tree Lighting. Once again this year, it will feature entertainment, fireworks, and a visit from Santa.
Woo-hoo! Okay. Do any other members have other announcements? No? Okay. We do not have any legal notices or non approvals, so our administrative matters, we're moving on to matters of appointment. Before we take this first matter, has the issue of licensing been addressed?
We did speak with the applicant, and he said that he is licensed, because he has other facilities in other towns. I don't think that it has been uploaded onto the website.
Oh, okay. All right. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.20.1, massage therapy of the zoning bylaws, 101 Cambridge Street, Legacy Wellness, Burlington, Doing Business as Elements, Burlington, is the applicant. Do you want, who should go first, staff or...
You guys...
I think that, I don't have any...
Okay. Sorry, could you, if you could just give your brief presentation about what you're doing, and start with your name, please?
Sure. My name is Michael Plump, and I am currently actually, my wife and I are the owners of the Elements Massage Studio in Stoneham, and we're looking to acquire the studio here in Burlington. It has been established since 2008, and currently, so let me back up a minute, so Elements Massage, for everybody's knowledge, is a franchise, but we're all individually owned small businesses. There's 31 in New England, and we all are part of a co-op, so we're all basically, we work together to benefit the communities we're in and the business. We're all very friendly, I am friends with the owner of the current Burlington studio, and he is looking to step back, basically. He is, this is kind of a second business, he's an investment banker, and by his own admission, he's an absentee owner, so he approached my wife and I and said, can we do something here? And that is mainly because of the history my wife and I have. As I mentioned, back in 2015, we took over the Elements studio in Stoneham, and at the time, out of the 31 studios in New England, it was ranked 30, 30 or 29, I can't remember anymore. But, so we came in with just our knowledge of business and the community, and helped bring it back up, and we are now, I'd love to say we're number one, but a lot of studios bigger than us, so we are around number... bigger than us, so we are around number 13 or 12 right now.
Burlington studio unfortunately is the lowest ranked revenue wise studio in all
of New England. Not, not something, but we know what the problem is. There is the economy, but it is really, it needs proper management. We don't plan on changing anything as far as staffing. We're going to do some touch up paint inside, but really what we're going to do is some retraining of the front desk staff and then reach out to the community. I've contracted to do a big marketing program in December. We're going to do $6,000 worth of postcards out on our gift cards, try and build back up the, the membership. Membership in Burlington is at 177. Yes, not great. And in Stoneham, for comparison, we're 453 currently. So I have all my notes, I did, I overprepared, so I'm going to set that aside. So being very frank is that this business needs help or it's going to close down, and that was his option, I'm going to either close it down or will my wife and I and, who's my silent partner, take over. And so we're taking a huge chance. We think we can do the same thing we did in Stoneham, and that is basically to take our knowledge, it's building culture. My wife is a vice president of human resources at a biomedical firm in Waltham, so I'd like to say it's all me, but it's really her teaching me how to build culture, and that's how, what we're going to do, the studio, make this a team again, make them understand what's important, and that's the clients, and then we're going to reach out to the community.
Okay, thank you. So mainly this is a change of ownership for existing business.
For taking this.
And staff, do you have anything you need to add?
At this time, we would have these.
Right. So it is my understanding from what you said that you have, you are licensed by the state.
Yes, so, I'm sorry to interrupt, I was just going to say, so we don't have our Burlington studio license yet. That they give you a two to three week period after acquisition because we have to provide what is known as the compliance officer, which is one of the massage therapists. So they don't currently work for me till December 1st, if this goes through, then we would apply for our license. So I don't have that. What I did bring, just some backing, I brought my license for Stoneham, if you'd like to have that.
I think that's great, and then once you get the license for Burlington, we would want you to submit a copy of that to our staff.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have that. I did also bring, just to show the history, I brought all the licenses of the current staff in Burlington.
Okay, great.
Everybody that works at an Elements Massage has to be licensed by the State of Massachusetts Board of Therapy.
Okay, and those are all current?
These are all current. I'm happy to leave copies with you.
Thank you.
I also printed out, both from the studio I currently own and from Burlington, the Google reviews, just to show you business we've been in for a while. And Burlington actually has slightly higher than Stoneham. Burlington has a 4.7 out of 5 with 142 reviews. We're at 4.5. So, for everything that's going on in Burlington as a studio, as far as management, I think that's pretty good, what they've been doing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Members, do you have questions? Joe?
Quick question for you. I know you said Elements requires you to be licensed, but to run that type of business, is there a requirement to have a license? Take Elements?
Not Elements, I mean Elements does, but the state requires it. The Board of Mass, the Board of Massage Therapy in Massachusetts.
Requires it anyways.
Absolutely.
So I, my point for that was that, you know, we would do it contingent on that, but if you can't run it without it, then we probably don't have to have a contingency.
I did actually reach out to my, I explained this situation that was going before the board. I said, asked if they could give me some type of letter just showing that it's standard practice. You open, you have a compliance officer, and then they give it. So they don't put it in writing, but so that's why I grabbed my current license from Stoneham and all the other information. But the therapists, as I said, these are all the licenses for each licensed massage therapist. We don't hire anybody that is not certified and licensed by the State of Massachusetts.
We can put that in our decision that it's contingent upon the new license. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone? Is there anyone in the room or online who has a question regarding this matter? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero.
Madam Chair, furthermore, I'd like to make a motion to refer to a request of Michael Plump on behalf of Legacy Wellness, Wellness Burlington, Doing Business as Elements Burlington for a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.20.1 Massage Therapy of the Zoning Bylaws for property located at 101 Cambridge Street with, within the general business BG District, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
No, that's it? Okay.
That it? All right.
That's it.
We hope to see each of you come by. We have new client specials, we're going to be doing all kinds of things starting in January, so.
January. Welcome.
Take care.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7B, 7C, and 7D together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.22 Drive Thru of the Zoning Bylaws, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Five Bank LLC is the applicant. Item 7B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.11 Discharges from Manmade Structures into the Wetlands of the Zoning Bylaws, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Five Bank LLC is the applicant. And item 7C is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 36 Cambridge Street, Salem Five Bank LLC is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening again, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with Reiman Bronstein representing the applicant, Salem Five Bank, pleased to be before you. Probably recall Matt Bombesi, who is civil engineer with Bowler Engineering that is here, also John Kosinski, who is Vice President, Real Estate Facilities for Salem Five. So I know we've had a chance, this is our third meeting, hopefully our, our last one, I think we're in a position hopefully to, to, to close with the board. Just to remind the board again, properties at 36 Cambridge Street, existing bank asset that's there today, a rather obsolete building, and I think I'm being a little kind perhaps in terms of that, that building today, in terms of how it's situated on the property and, you know, not certainly up to today's standards for what the bank would like to be able to provide to its customers. So this would be a new bank branch that would be built on the property, bringing the drive through down from three, what are three lanes today, down to, to just one drive through. When we met with the board, the first meeting, we were asked to come back with some additional landscaping changes, which we did, and the revised landscaping plan was submitted, it was discussed with the board at the prior meeting, if you recall. And also there was a desire for us to incorporate granite curbing as opposed to the Cape Cod berm that we had previously proposed. So those changes were made. I think the one thing that we were kind of held up on is we were still before the Conservation Commission. We had appeared before them, well, I think it's been two, two meetings now that you've had with the commission, and I know that John Keely has submitted a, a comment letter indicating that they are comfortable with the plans and will be approving at their next meeting. So we did make a couple of minor changes to accommodate the Conservation Commission's request, and maybe, Matt, if you wanted to briefly touch upon, well, I should probably mention, the, the first change since you, you saw the plan before is, the fire department had indicated concern about the canopy height and being able to pull a, a fire apparatus around, so we ended up rejiggering that canopy so that we pulled it back so that there's ample room there for fire apparatus to be able to drive around without hitting the top of the canopy. But a couple of more, more technical changes, maybe, Matt, you could explain what we changed there.
Yeah, I would say that the most substantive change was both actually DEP and the Conservation Commission to ask for plantings along the rear of the site, along Little Brook, so some riverfront plantings. So those were on the previous landscape plan, we just basically added those to the, to the new one. I think we had presented some of the drainage changes at the last hearing. We did submit some updated drainage calc's and narratives to Conservation, they just wanted to document that, but no, no real substantive changes to that other than just kind of some little minor tweaking and some documentation.
Okay, thank you. All right. We, we did look at this quite a bit before. Do you have anything else you wanted to add, Liz?
Not at this time.
So basically, ConCon's comfortable, but they are not meeting again until after our December meeting. So if the board agrees, I thought it would be appropriate to move forward with the condition that they have to meet all future, what's the word, just conditions that the ConCon will be putting forward in December. And I, I'm comfortable with that, but each board member has to make that decision on their own. Any other questions?
Do you guys have, do you have the rendering of the, of the building itself?
Give me one moment.
Architectural render?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we do, yeah.
Does it have the landscape and everything in there?
Are this one or something else?
Oh. You're talking about the site plan, Joe, or?
Well, I, no, I was hoping to see, you don't, you don't have a rendering with landscaping in it.
Oh.
Like a respective view with the tree.
Yeah.
Get a landscape plan.
But maybe if you, if you might be able to go to the landscaping plan, we could try to.
Yeah, it's so, it's so flat when you look at it.
It is.
Also, last, last board meeting, our economic director was here. Did you have a conversation with her since the last meeting?
He didn't. I mean, I, I went out to the site and actually looked, there, there's really no connectability between this particular parcel and what's next door because it's the Jack's Pizza and Ted's McCall building, and there's actually a, a brook that runs along there as well. So, I mean, there's, I, I didn't hear anything further on that, and I, after looking at the site with my own two eyes, actually went out there that following morning after this planning board meeting, and there's really no connection that's possible there because it's the, the back of the building. I mean, we are providing, you know, there's going to be sidewalk that exists along Cambridge Street that, you know, folks will be able to walk and then come into the site, you know, have sidewalk that, that comes along there, so, but I'm not sure there's really anything more than that that we can do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, please, yeah.
I did ask, one of our employees at the bank was in that particular branch, was there for 23 years, and she said there has never been a path from our facility to Jack's Pizza that way, then in fact, there is one beaten path behind Total Wine's that we're applying to that's on the other side of us.
Yeah, I think it was, it was less about like what's been there and more, because we are in the midst of planning for the future of the town and connecting things better and also having it move towards a certain look and feel. That was just one of the things that I know Melissa had brought up at the last meeting, and I didn't know if you all had connected since then. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? No? This is a public meeting, is there anybody online that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero.
Somebody else is going to have to make a motion. I can't, I wasn't that last.
Oh, that's right, Brenda wasn't here, so Brenda's not voting on this one. It's at the bottom of page seven.
Sure, got it, I can make the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, sorry, Joe.
I'm sorry, one, one item that I, we closed, we closed the public hearing. There's, there's one thing that irks me every time I drive down that area, there's that first entrance as you're coming.
Oh, that you can't take a left?
And you can't take a left, but for some reason, nobody knows how to read that sign. Nobody knows how to read that.
I'm not sure they can do anything about that.
No, but that's right there.
They can read the sign.
They just ignore it.
Just ignore it.
I don't mean they don't think it applies.
It's not that the signage is inappropriate, it's, it's just.
It's like the don't take a right out of the AAA parking lot.
Well, I guess, I guess the other, I guess the follow up on that is, what's the reason for that?
I don't know.
You know, because it really doesn't make sense.
It doesn't.
Other than you've got a, you know, a signal to take a left up ahead.
I don't know. It seems like, sometimes it seems to me it would be a benefit if you could get some of those people into the plaza and get the people, get them off Cambridge Street.
It's only one lane, and then you break out to two at the light, so you're, you're basically taking a left with the one that backs up as you're waiting to take that left.
Right.
I don't know.
It's been that way.
Yeah.
As long as I remember, I think it's always been.
I just don't think Salem Five.
It is a little awkward, I agree.
It's odd, I don't, I don't know if it's one lane or if it's two, because you can, you can take a left or a right out of that.
I think it is two lanes.
It's two lanes.
You can take a left or a right, but it's just not two directions.
It's like most of Cambridge Street. No one really knows if it's one lane, two lanes, or one and a half.
It's like 3A. It's like 3A.
It is 3A.
It just goes in.
The 3A of parking lots.
And you squeeze by the other side.
All right. I need somebody to make a motion at the bottom of page seven.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to approve the request of Salem Five Bank for the approval of two special permits pursuant to section 4.3.2.22 Drive Through in section 4.4.1.11 Discharges from manmade structures into the wetlands of Article 4 of the Town Burlington zoning bylaws for the property located in general this BG District at 36 Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A.
Attached.
Revised?
I don't think we revised it.
The condition, the condition on.
Oh, as amended.
As amended.
Oh, it's, it's, yes. It's, it's always in there.
It's already been written that way.
Okay, attached, thank you.
And?
Second.
Just gonna keep going?
You both together?
Yep.
Madam Chair, to make a motion to.
Don't they have to second the first motion though?
We have to. We have to vote first.
Separately? Okay, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero.
So five, five, zero.
Oh, sorry. Five, zero, one, thank you.
And then some, and then Bill, you can read, keep reading.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Chair, to make a motion to approve the request of Salem Five Bank for the approval of site plan application for the property located at 36 Cambridge Street to permit the demolition of an existing bank building in the construction of a 2,300 plus or minus square foot building, bank building, with one drive-through lane and associated site improvements as reflected on the plan entitled, proposed site plan documents for Salem Five proposed bank development prepared by Bowler Engineering dated August 23, 2023 and revised November 13, 2023, consistence of 14 sheets, subject to the following provisions, terms and conditions.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Five, zero, one, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all, very much appreciate your time and working with us, and I think it made for a better project with certainly more landscaping than what we had proposed initially, but I think all, all for the better, so, thank you.
More is better.
When is the demolition occurring?
Oh, thank you so much.
Mark?
Those are going to be.
Just had a question.
When is the demolition starting?
What, what would be your expected timing for construction, John?
Probably in the spring, given what they're given now, which, which we much, much appreciate, and personally, I just want to say I admire you all doing what you do, and I think it's a great benefit for those, for the town, and it's wonderful to watch.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Facebook's going to ask what's going there, so.
I feel like heads up.
Next on our agenda is minutes for October 5th, 2023. Did anyone have a chance to read them?
Thank you, I'm happy, thanks, Kevin.
Anyone, everyone else have a chance to read them besides us?
I did.
Okay, good. I'm going to be abstaining because I was not at this meeting. Do we have enough people to vote on them? Yes?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm going to abstain as well.
Do abstains?
Yep, so you got four, you got four members that vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 5th, 2023. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
So we have four, zero, two. Correct? Okay. All right. I have a discussion item on here that's kind of a big discussion, and I'm, I'm not sure how much we can get into it today. I'm wondering if maybe we should set up a subcommittee to discuss this. It's, it's what, you know, Joe and I have had discussions about this, Brenda and I have discussions about this. The police station project that is before us now, I think we all agree that we need a new police station. No one is arguing that at all. But, as, as you brought forward, Joe, there is a, a very big question as to whether or not that's all we need, and perhaps it might be better for the town long-term to have a public safety building, probably in a different location. I have had discussions since we talked, as I said, with staff, with Brenda, I've also talked to the police chief and the fire chief and Paul Sagarino. It's an enormous undertaking, but this is what we're supposed to be doing. Planning long-term for what is best for the community. And, I think what all of us want to make sure we're doing is that we are not taking the quickest, easiest path, but taking that path that will bring us to the best result for the town long-term. I'm not sure that we can really get too far on that tonight, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have, and I think it's something that also probably needs to be public discussion, but perhaps we need to get our ducks in a row first. I'm not sure how you all think we should be approaching this. I was thinking maybe a subcommittee, or maybe try to put together a committee that includes some of us and some of these other stakeholders. What do you all think?
Yeah, 100%.
I think.
Yeah, we need to include the other stakeholders because we, we're, you know, on the same page here, but the other folks, you know, are not, and that just gets you nowhere.
That's right.
Right, I mean, I have not heard anyone actually argue that a public safety building is not in the best interests of the town. I've heard a lot of argument about location and about expense, but really, no one's saying, no, that's not really a, a better solution, you know? So, I think the challenge is probably going to be funding.
I, I think, you know, as you said, priorities in the town, which I haven't seen as well, we set our priorities at the DPW site and the recreation, those new buildings, but you would think that if you looked at a five-year, 10-year plan, the priority would be police, fire.
Police, yeah. Well, another point that Liz made that I think is very important, and, is that we don't have a facilities plan, or even a very firm understanding of all of the facilities in the property that the town has. And, it's difficult to come up with a, a forward-thinking plan if we don't really know what we actually have to put our arms around. I think the feasibility study that was done in this particular case was extremely narrow, and I don't think it considered a range of possibilities. It considered one possibility. So that's something.
Maybe not even town properties, because this property's available now.
It could be purchased, that's right, that's right.
That may be.
So there's not, yeah, there's sort of, I don't mean that a, a study of the town properties that we have would replace this other thing, I think they might complement each other, but we've never really done that, taken a real, long-term look, and I think we need to. I think we're going to get some pushback.
True.
But, so, do we think this is a subcommittee along, or do we want to reach out? I think we need to reach out and create a committee that's probably two people from planning, see if we can get select Board to come, police chief, fire chief, Paul Sag, who else?
I think recreation, because we've heard time and time again how recreation in the COA is bursting at the seams.
That's right, you're right.
And that building is not, and there's been some renovations in there, but that's not a new building.
I did ask about that, and according to the town administrator, the, the building is in excellent condition because of all the work that's been done. I'm told the fire station is also in good condition, and probably would not need a major renovation for about 15 years, but that doesn't, 15 years is not that far.
I was going to say, I thought you were going to say like that.
And, for, for as long as I've been involved, there's always been discussion about the town having a, a pool, a town pool with the recreation center. So, you know, these are things that, you know, we now know that there's real estate available in the center of town, you know, now, more than anything, we should be looking at that stuff, because there are sites that we could be using, whether it be for a comprehensive recreation site, and then we open, open that site up for other, you know, that recreation up for, you know, the public safety. But, we also know that, you know, a lot of the towns around that have done that planning have built public safety buildings, because there's a lot of synergies involved.
Makes sense, and efficiencies.
Efficiencies, synergies, there's things that overlap, that there's savings, there's cost savings in the long run, it just makes sense.
And even though I think that there's pushback, I think it falls on us as planners, right?
That's right, that's exactly right.
The police chief, when I actually brought this idea up to the police chief, he told me he actually presented the same exact idea several years ago and was shot down by the previous town administrator, and that's why he's moving forward with this plan, but he is very much in support of the idea. He just wants to make sure that he doesn't lose both, you know?
Of course.
Sure.
Understandably.
You know, he's got a charge, he has, he has a, you know, a goal in mind, and that's fully understandable, you know, but we need to take all the roles of the town, we, you know, look at all the assets that the town has, and that includes, you know, maybe, you know, getting involved with the, with the school committee and seeing what sites they're going to be using.
Well, review of all town facilities would include school facilities.
That's right.
So, how do we go about doing this, and is this something that we can create on our own, or is this something that has to be created by select Board or town admin or?
I think the first step would kind of just be to, to kind of have a meeting, you know, wouldn't be a forum of anything, it wouldn't be above three people per forum, but just kind of have a, have a discussion, kind of figuring it out offline.
So let's, yeah.
And then kind of.
An initial, yeah.
What are the next steps?
Okay.
What's, you know, and just kind of, I just kind of want to go off of what you said, Barbara, I feel like, you know, we don't have, like, I, I have never been presented with, I don't know if it exists, kind of just a baseline understanding of all of our current assets, where they stand, kind of what, you know, you know.
Shouldn't they give them to Barbara or ask them to?
Perfect example, the old Meadowbrook School, right? I mean, you know, which is now Mount Hope. I mean, I love Mount Hope, that's where my boys went.
I went to school at Meadowbrook.
But the point is, where, where is it, you know, where is that in terms of, of leases?
Right.
You know, where, you know. So, you know, what I would want to see is kind of, and this is totally separate from like the political, like the station side and the politics of that, is just having a consultant come in and do a, a review and an updated, you know, plan, not even to look at what is in the future, but just to get a.
What do we have?
What we have, what condition it is in, how many years out we think that it's going to need replacement, you know?
Yeah.
What are all the properties that we have the rate of last or first refusal on? Are these things that we, we should be planning for in the future? Hey, guys, we know that this is going to be up, so we should be, you know, putting money away for the eventual purchase of this property, you know, just thinking in terms of, of that longer-range, bigger picture.
Okay, so I think the first step then would be for a couple of members, along with Liz, to meet with town administration and some select Board members, perhaps, to just discuss the need to create, either to create a committee, or more importantly, probably to.
Bill, you're here.
Define the scope of this project, define the scope of a project that we need to undertake, you know? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another thought I was thinking about this, was maybe we benchmark how other towns have done it, so if you go down 62 in Wilmington, they have a fairly new public safety building, right? How do they go about it and how, you know, what was their success path?
Lexington has a brand-new public safety building. I think Bedford, you know, in other words, that's where these towns, that's what they're doing.
And here's the thing, I'm, I understand that it's an enormous financial impact on the town.
But everyone benefits.
But that having been said, everyone benefits, but also Burlington has an extremely strong business base, we have, we're, we're very strong financially. If our neighboring towns can manage to do this, I think we can too.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
That face, right.
That's right, they're doing it without, they're doing it without that face, that's